...ago that the January 6th committee made the surprise announcement that they had an important witness and new evidence that needed to be presented urgently. They were not supposed to reconvene their hearings for weeks. Many of its members were out of town, but they've been called back to hear the live testimony of a former top aide to President Trump's chief of staff, Mark Meadows. Her name is Cassidy Hutchinson, and she will be the first White House insider to testify live. She was with Meadows for many of the critical moments leading up to January 6th and on the day itself. We've already heard some other previously recorded testimony during these hearings, where she claimed that a half dozen Republican lawmakers had reached out for pardons after the 6th. She was reportedly also the source who claimed President Trump said maybe the rioters had the right idea when they chanted "Hang Mike Pence." She is expected to reveal more of what she knows in her live testimony today. Part of the urgency behind this hearing, we're told, is that she has received credible threats to her safety. I want to go right now to NBC News Capitol Hill correspondent Ali Vitale, who's just outside the hearing room. A ton of speculation today, Ali.
A ton of speculation, Lester, and rightfully so. You laid out the reasons why Cassidy Hutchinson is such an interesting witness, but really, part of the story here is how quickly this came together. You're right, those of us who have been outside this hearing room now for weeks, we're expecting a little bit of a pause because the committee was going to take a break and reassess some of the new information that they've since gotten from starting the beginning of these hearings. They're going to try to apply that to the two hearings that we knew were coming in mid-July. And then, of course, less than 24 hours ago, we received word of this hearing, a lot of secrecy around who the witness was going to be. But sources familiar telling me and my colleagues here at NBC that Cassidy Hutchinson, the former top aide to former chief of staff Mark Meadows, is going to be the person testifying. And it's that proximity that makes her such an interesting witness. The fact that she was in many of these meetings, that she was a liaison for many lawmakers who wanted to speak to the then-president, the then-chief of staff, but also some of the ways that she herself was integral in parsing out the strategy in places like Georgia on behalf of the White House, talking to officials on the ground there as they tried to effectively overturn Joe Biden's victory in that state, or at the very least muddy the waters there. It also supplants the idea that the committee, while they haven't been able to speak to Meadows, they're now able to speak to his top aide, effectively giving them access to all of the information that Meadows may have given them, but now getting it through this lower-level aide. I do think one of the key things that we've been watching is the fact that she's the key witness who teased out current lawmakers who asked for pardons in real time in the waning days of the Trump administration. That's something that has a lot of people up here on Capitol Hill concerned. Multiple sources talking to me about what a big deal that is to them. But what Chairman Bennie Thompson told me before he left town for what we thought was the last hearing for a few weeks, he told me that we had not yet heard all there was to hear on pardons. That's certainly one of the key things that we could hear from Hutchinson today when she testifies in just a few minutes.
All right, Ali, we will be talking to you along the way today. Let me bring in NBC News Chief White House correspondent Peter Alexander and NBC News legal analyst Danny Savalas. Good to have both of you here. Peter, let me begin with you. This committee raised expectations from the get-go. New video, new witness statements, and now a surprise hearing. They've raised the bar for speculation. What do we know and what can we interpret from what's happened?
Well, clearly, this committee has done a good job to this point in galvanizing eyeballs across the country. The number of viewers across this country has been significant. Obviously, at the end of the day, there's only so much that Congress can do. It'll be up to the Justice Department whether there are any prosecutions to follow here. But what they have done by doing this is they've now drawn more eyeballs again to see what, if anything, new we can hear from Cassidy Hutchinson on this day. I was speaking to a source close to this investigation, who detailed what they said were some sincere security concerns as it related to the witness, who they weren't even identifying at this time. And so that was part of the reason for the urgency in hearing from her. And as we hear from her today, there'll be several key things to look for, and I'm sure Danny will get into this as well. But in particular, if she is to sort of go further than she's gone in those four previous taped depositions, will she say, "I heard him say"? Was she in a room where she herself has firsthand knowledge of something that the former president said detailing his knowledge that what he was doing was illegal?
Because we haven't heard that yet.
No doubt.
We haven't heard the magic words.
Exactly right, Lester. They have to sort of connect these dots. And they've done a lot of dot connecting, but that's one set of dots they have yet to connect, which is the president may have been told, may have heard it from a variety of different places, but whether, in fact, he knew, he understood what he was doing was illegal is a challenge they still face, particularly challenging when you speak about someone like this former president, who tweeted prolifically, but he didn't type out emails. He had some handwritten notes as well. So it will be significant if they can hear her hearing him say words to that effect.
Danny, let me take a step back here. You've got a witness that you want to put on quickly because there may be threats involved. What do you think the thinking is there if this person is truly in danger?
It could be that she's in danger, but it could also be that this is a relatively recent move by Hutchinson. About a week ago, it was reported that she changed lawyers. Now, that might mean nothing, but she switched lawyers from a lawyer that is perceived as being favorable to Trump world and to a more independent type of lawyer, not connected to the Trump world the way her original lawyer was. Now, in the criminal defense world, when you have a joint defense agreement, if a defendant in that group decides they're going to change their mind, they're not going to go to trial, they're going to bail out, and they're going to cooperate with the government, this is an analogy in a way. If you have one of the co-defendants leave, they leave the joint defense agreement, they might even get new lawyers as a result. This may be just the committee moving quickly because they've seized on their moment, and Hutchinson is finally willing to talk to them in the way that they want her to and give the evidence that they want her to give. So this is not just, in my mind, a security issue. It may also be that Hutchinson is finally coming around to where the January 6th committee feels like she will give compelling testimony. But because this was all done in secret, the way it was, we have to wait until the moment itself to find out for sure.
Does this suggest that perhaps the committee is talking to justice now or working in cooperation?
Yes and no. I mean, justice has been working independently the entire time. And DOJ has much broader and powerful tools at its disposal in order to conduct investigations. I would say that the committee's power to investigate, yes, they can issue subpoenas, but we've learned in the last few years that people are starting to really ignore congressional subpoenas and take their chances with the punishment in a way that you simply can't do with a grand jury subpoena or a DOJ-sought subpoena. The DOJ has much more robust methods for enforcing its investigatory tools. And the other thing about the DOJ is it keeps everything secret. You usually don't know you're being indicted until you're indicted.
All right. Cassidy Hutchinson has already sat down, as you know, several times in private with committee investigators. One of her biggest revelations so far is that some Republican lawmakers sought pardons after the January 6th attack. Let's listen.
Mr. Gates and Mr. Brooks, I know, both advocated for there to be a blanket pardon for members involved in that meeting and a handful of other members that weren't at the December 21st meeting as the preemptive pardons. Mr. Gates was personally pushing for a pardon, and he was doing so since early December. I'm not sure why. Mr. Gates had reached out to me to ask if he could have a meeting with Mr. Meadows about receiving a presidential pardon.
Did they all contact you?
Not all of them, but several of them did.
So you mentioned Mr. Gates, Mr. Brooks.
Mr. Biggs did. Mr. Jordan talked about congressional pardons, but he never asked me for one. It was more for an update on whether the White House is going to pardon members of Mr. Gomer asked for one as well.
Any?
Mr. Perry asked for a pardon too. I'm sorry.
Mr. Perry? Did he talk to you directly?
Yes, he did.
Did Marsha have any contact to?
No, she didn't contact me about it. I heard that she had asked White House Counsel Office for a pardon from Mr. Philbin, but I didn't frequently give this.
Cassidy Hutchinson in some of the earlier deposition testimony. Joining us now is Chuck Todd, NBC's political director and moderator of Meet the Press. Chuck, good to see you. What are your thoughts? What does this sense of expectation do to how people are going to consume this hearing?
Well, look, I think they've set the bar pretty high. I mean, from what I understand, no witness has been interviewed for more hours in total than Cassidy Hutchinson. In many ways, the way she's been described, I mean, this is my description, but how, what she's able to do is she's essentially a human dot connector. She is able to put these folks together, the names that have become household names, if you've been paying attention to this hearing, whether it's John Eastman, whether it's Jeffrey Clark, what happened there, that we already saw what she knew about pardons. But this is, you know, somebody with eyes and ears of the chief of staff, who has eyes and ears of the president almost at all times. She was in the room where it happened, to borrow a phrase, if you must. So, look, I think the bar's pretty high. Again, the stuff I've heard of what she's been able to tell this committee is something else, and I think seeing it all laid out here, if it is laid out, as has been hinted at, this could be very powerful testimony, and she could be a very powerful witness. But I will say this, the committee has raised the stakes with the atmosphere with which they rushed this hearing on today, that's for sure.
Yeah, the committee, though, has obviously had some interest in how people will stay with this, giving it in bite-sized pieces, if you will, and now this. Do you think that this is going to change the outcome, not the outcome, but the number of hearings we'll see going forward? Are they changing strategy before our eyes?
I think it's possible. Look, I think they've done a very good job making this digestible. You know, unlike the Watergate hearings, which were 14-hour marathons, they have done this in a more bite-sized manner because this was a complicated story. This is a complicated scandal, and you got to almost take it in pieces. The pressure on the states, the alternative electors, some of this stuff is sort of convoluted language. You got to lay it out, and I think they've done a good job of that. I think they have created, you know, a little bit of mystery by having a, quote, "mystery witness" that it obviously leaked out by the time of the start of this hearing. But I think that's another way to draw eyeballs. I can tell you, one of the reasons why they had originally decided not to air hearings this week and next week was in part due to the holiday week coming up, but also they did expect the abortion ruling to essentially overshadow everything for a bit. And I have to tell you, it's pretty impressive to me that this committee had something that they believe is this compelling, that they think they're able to penetrate. And, look, there's a lot of stuff happening in America right now. There's a lot of instability in our democracy in general. And so, like I said, I think they've raised the bar pretty high by doing this when they're doing. And if she is as forthcoming as it sounds like she's been in these depositions, Lester, I think this could trigger more people to talk. And obviously, if more people talk, we may need to build more hearings.
Well, they have been making that appeal at the end of every hearing so far. A key figure in these hearings, and you heard Chuck mention it, a Trump-allied lawyer named John Eastman. Previously, the committee presented memos that Eastman wrote urging former Vice President Pence to overturn the election. He's been portrayed as the architect of this plan. We're now learning that federal agents have seized Eastman's phone. NBC's national security correspondent Ken Delanian's been following for us. Tell us how that piece fits into this puzzle.
Yeah, Lester, this is a really significant development in that other investigation that's going on, going on behind, outside of public view. And what we learned last night, because Mr. Eastman and his lawyers have challenged this warrant, is that last week, a group of FBI agents acting on behalf of the Justice Department's Inspector General accosted Eastman outside a restaurant in Albuquerque, New Mexico, frisked him, seized his phone, and they did that because they convinced a magistrate judge that there was probable cause to believe that a crime had been committed and that evidence of that crime was on that phone. And this is doubly significant because it happened on the same day that Jeffrey Clark, the former Justice Department lawyer, who also played a key role in the scheme to overturn the election, according to the committee, his home was searched by federal agents and his electronic devices were seized. And it's really the first evidence we've seen that this Justice Department investigation has gone beyond just the people who committed violence, who were present at the Capitol on January 6th, and is looking at potentially efforts to overthrow the election.
And that leads me right back to Danny Savalas, something you said a few minutes ago, that when you're under investigation, sometimes you don't know you're under investigation. If you're John Eastman, how do you interpret this? They took my phone.
Ordinarily, if you are a subject or a target of a federal investigation, you don't find out that you weren't indicted or that you decided not to. You just never hear from them. And you're right, when you are indicted, that's normally when you find out. They don't issue, the DOJ doesn't issue, "Hey, we're not going to prosecute you" memoranda. If your electronic device has been seized, that means that the government has convinced a judge, in an admittedly one-sided affair, that there is probable cause to believe that there is evidence of a crime in your phone. And in order to get that warrant, that's what they have to show a judge. That means that there is a likelihood, they believe, that they will find incriminating evidence on that phone. It means that they have their eyes on you if your cellphone is being seized. So it is a major cause for concern if you're John Eastman and his attorneys, given that you already know that not only has a federal judge laid out in an opinion, dealing with privilege, not with culpability, but laid out a case for the fact that you may have committed a crime. And in addition, you've heard plenty of evidence in the last couple of weeks through this committee outlining how you may have committed a crime. There's a lot of informal accusations going out there around John Eastman. So if I'm John Eastman, I'm very concerned if that has now culminated in a search and a seizure of my electronic devices. By the way, that's where all your incriminating evidence is. It's in your electronic device. I mean, that's the bottom line. It's no longer papers in a locked box. It's what's on your iPhone or your cellular device because that tells them where you've been, when you went somewhere, when you texted. It date stamps everything. It is a treasure trove for investigators.
Peter, we don't often talk about ratings for hearings, but this is made for television. They're very upfront for this. How much is that complicated Republicans who want to criticize this process? We know a lot of the criticisms are geared toward, well, you're not talking inflation and some of the other issues of the day.
Well, what's been striking is the Republicans really haven't pushed back at this. They haven't pushed back on the facts that have been communicated, with some exceptions saying she may have misremembered that I had asked for a pardon. And I'm told by folks who were close to Cassidy Hutchinson that she didn't misremember anything. She was a top-level individual, a top-level mind, whose responsibility was to know anything that any of these lawmakers were saying to this White House. That's one thing. Separately beyond that, and I'm just hearing even as we're speaking right now from some, from a former Trump aide who says to me that MAGA folks are going to do everything they can to try to dismiss this testimony. But this individual who worked in that White House says to me that she, Cassidy Hutchinson, was, in their words, a, quote, "consummate insider." She said she was a special advisor to the president. She was a senior advisor to the chief of staff. She was actively involved in legislative affairs, and she was involved in operations as well, which meant that she knew everything from what the president's schedule looked like to who was visiting the president. And beyond that, she knew about the president's movements, which could be significant as it relates to January 6th, because you remember on January 6th, in the president's speech at the Ellipse, just below the White House, the president said that he was going to march to the Capitol. Then, of course, a lot of the people who did, the rioters who went, said they were disappointed he didn't do it. And the president said he never had any intention to do that, as communicated by some of his aides. Is there any evidence that demonstrates that there were plans made? Were there plans made for the president potentially to go to the Capitol?
Don't you think, given 20 hours of testimony, this, whatever, there would be nothing new left to get from her, assuming she's being cooperative?
It's possible that we would assume there's nothing new to get from her. But what's also possible is that in the course of the last couple of weeks, we've now heard from Alexander Holder. This is the documentary filmmaker who provided the committee with about 10 hours of footage, where he interviewed the former president, the former vice president, Ivanka Trump, those closest to the inner circle of Trump world, of the Trump White House. So was there any information provided there? She corroborate it? Can she dispute it? That's one of the things that's changed in the course of the last couple of weeks.
All right, we're just 10 minutes away now from the hearing. And one quick note, you may have noticed a QR code on the bottom right side of your screen. You can hold your phone to it, scan it, and it'll take you to our digital site for live updates and analysis of the hearing as it happens. I want to bring in Washington correspondent Yamiche Alcindor, who joins the conversation. Yamiche, first of all, what struck you when you heard there was going to be a hearing today, and you've had some time to process it? Where do you think this leads us?
Well, having a surprise hearing shrouded in secrecy really does up the stakes and the expectations for this hearing. Look no further than John Dean, who was the former White House counsel under President Nixon, who said, quote, "This better be a big deal." He's saying that because he said the only surprise witness during the Nixon hearings, during the Watergate hearings, was a witness who then went on to detail the taping system of former President Richard Nixon. So really, the stakes are very, very high here. But of course, Cassidy Hutchinson has been someone who has given us time and time again new information. Lawmakers said that they were going to be key on making sure that there was new material, new video, and she has been at the center of that. Of course, when we think about the fact that she listed by name so many of the Republicans who were asking for pardons, even though they were pushing back on her, we now know that Representative Mo Brooks said that more than 100 Republicans requested a pardon from the White House. It's also interesting because Cassidy Hutchinson goes to this idea of cracking the black box at the White House open. She did it the first time when we heard about former President Trump saying, maybe it is a good idea to hang former President Mike Pence, which is remarkable to say out loud. But there could be more information that she could give us. She was in the rooms, in the conversation. She was even at the Ellipse with former President Trump when he was making that call for people to go to the Capitol. So what did she hear? What did she know? Of course, she was the aide to Mark Meadows, who has been a central figure here. He was someone who was receiving text messages from all sorts of conservatives to lawmakers, to reporters, telling them about the violence at the Capitol. And he is someone who possibly could have more information about sort of whether or not President Trump ever said something that right now lawmakers have not proven, and that is, I knew that I lost the election. I know that I lost the election, but I want to steal it anyways. When I'm talking to legal sources and Republicans and Democrats, that is something that they are listening out for. It's been very clear that President Trump has been told over and over again up to this point that he lost the election. But did he ever actually say, "I lost the election"? One other thing, Lester, Bennie Thompson, the chair of this committee, has said 187 minutes was how long it took former President Trump to go from watching this happen on TV, this Capitol attack happen on TV, to actually putting out a message that says, "Go home, you need to stop rioting, you need to stop attacking the Capitol." That's a critical 187 minutes, and I'm wondering if Cassidy Hutchinson will have more information on that particular point, in those particular critical moments.
Well, we will know soon enough. Again, we're about eight minutes away from the start of this surprise hearing. I want to bring back Chuck Todd, NBC's political director and moderator of Meet the Press, to talk about the potential political fallout from this hearing. It's not lost on anybody, Chuck, that this is primary day in a lot of places.
It is. In fact, the January 6th issue is actually on the ballot in one House race in Illinois, where you have two members of Congress facing off against each other. Rodney Davis is an incumbent. He was one that voted in favor of a bipartisan commission, not this one, as many of these Republican members. And he's actually vowed that if he wins reelection, he's likely the person that would take over the January 6th investigation if Republicans do that. But he's being challenged by somebody who's been endorsed by Trump, this woman named Mary Miller. She sparked some controversy earlier when she claimed she misspoke, when she talked about the Supreme Court decision and praised the saving of white life. She claims apparently that she meant to say "right to life," and it came out as that. But it wasn't her first sort of brush with controversial, far-right, extreme sort of conversation. And so, look, that's on the ballot. You know, Donald, the Republicans, come November, Lester, if they end up wondering, huh, this midterm didn't turn out as well as we thought it would in January, they're only going to have Donald Trump to blame, whether it's the Roe v. Wade decision with his Supreme Court appointees, whether it is January 6th and the fact that essentially the party is paralyzed from being able to move on from Trump, or whether it's the way he's participated in primaries in ensuring the nomination of less-electable candidates. And you put all of this package together, and Donald Trump is sort of haunting the Republicans right now when it comes to 2022 and the midterms. He's not an asset. He's either a small liability or a giant one. We'll find out in November.
Well, look at where we are. We're talking about this, this surprise hearing, right on the verge of people will now start peeling away very quickly for the long July 4th holiday. We're not talking about abortion right now. We're not talking about, we're not talking about inflation. We're talking about the J-6 hearings. So in many ways, this is a pivotal week, no matter what we hear from her.
It is, and I think, look, she, like I said, they've raised the bar. They need to deliver today. I'll give, you know, but this, I think this committee deserves the benefit of the doubt. They've delivered with each of these hearings above what they have promised to show folks. So I think they deserve that benefit. But I think the stakes are higher there. I think there's no doubt abortion and that ruling, you know, it isn't going to be something that sort of fades away. You know, sometimes a big thing happens, and then we stop talking about it. We saw that, we've seen that a lot over the years on the issue of guns. But there's so much action in the states on abortion, I don't think that's going to happen. And if these hearings continue to be public, that, and the whole thing, I think, like I said, it really complicates things for the Republican Party, who's desperately trying to make this election about inflation and Joe Biden. And they constantly have to either avoid the media to talk about either their position on abortion, which is dividing the Republican Party now more than the Democratic Party, Donald Trump, what they've seen out of the hearings. It is tougher being a Republican candidate out there due to all of these stories converging in this moment.
All right, Danny Savalas, I want to talk about the people we have seen so far as live witnesses. They've obviously done extensive deposition testimony. Is there a risk in putting them in the live hot seat under these circumstances?
Always. I mean, there is a decision you have to make. When you take video depositions, you have the luxury of cutting and pasting the parts that you like. We saw that with one witness who was supposed to appear live and then couldn't make it because his wife went into labor, so they had to take snippets of his deposition. But it's never really quite the same as putting someone on the stand and not knowing what they're going to say. And I got the sense that, at least with Adam Schiff, who asked quite a few leading questions, that maybe he was concerned about what direction one of his witnesses was going to go. So there's always a difference in style when you have a video deposition that you splice up and present to a jury, and this is just one gigantic jury, the entire country, and when you have witnesses live. Because when it's live, as you know, Lester, as everybody knows, anything can happen, and it could go south.
I'm trying to think, I haven't heard one witness who I would classify as sounding like a hostile witness.
Not at all.
They sound forthcoming and cooperative.
For two reasons, I think. Number one, these are folks that, for whatever reason, the committee has selected, so they know they're going to give testimony that they like. Those that have resisted have not been called. Those who have asserted Fifth Amendment protections, it wouldn't make a lot of sense to call. Wouldn't make a lot of sense to call a John Eastman, who would just get into the room and basically assert the Fifth Amendment, just as we saw him do in his deposition several times. You see similar practice in grand jury proceedings, even though we never see them because we're not in the room, including me, and other folks are excluded from a grand jury room. But similarly, if a witness isn't going to help the prosecution's case, they don't typically call that witness. And that's exactly what this is. The one-sided nature of this proceeding is closely related to that of a grand jury proceeding, which is always the prosecutor's show. The prosecutor only calls the greatest hits when it comes to witnesses. Defense attorneys not only don't get to cross-examine, they're not even in the room. And figuratively, the defense really isn't in the room at this proceeding.
Does it feel like what's happening now? Well, what's notable in that case, right, is that the former president himself has now been complaining privately that there aren't Republicans on this committee. In the past, Republicans have been dismissing it, saying they wanted no part of it. Initially, initially, the minority leader, the House top Republican, Kevin McCarthy, tried to put a couple Republicans on there. Nancy Pelosi had vetoed those individuals. The two Republicans are viewed as anti-Trump Republicans, Liz Cheney and Adam Kinzinger right now. But had there been a Republican on there, had there been other Republicans on this committee, the former president's thinking is they could have sort of gummed up the process. They kind of could have pushed back in ways. But one of the benefits for the January 6th committee is they continue with this, not so much a prosecution, it's not a legal process, but their effort in this regard is that the individuals they've been speaking to, and most certainly Cassidy Hutchinson, with four separate recorded testimonies, depositions, is that they know what her positions are. They know what her answers are. And if at any point any of these individuals were to say anything differently, believe me, they've done their homework and can say, well, in fact, you said the following, isn't that the case? So any witness who would try to become hostile in any way would be in a tough position. But notably, they haven't been bringing in hostile witnesses.
Yeah, and we know, once again, it's important to point out, they have kind of led every time with their conclusion that, you know, all lines will ultimately meet with Donald Trump.
Well, that's where they still have to go, right? They're bringing it back to Donald Trump. They've said, they've said multiple times, he was told that this was illegal, this was communicated to him, his aides knew it was illegal. John Eastman, his former attorney or one of his legal advisors, knew it was illegal. But again, as we've said in this conversation, what they've yet to say is that Donald Trump himself understood that, that he knew that. And that's why, again, as we've said, if they hear Cassidy Hutchinson in the rooms where it happened saying, "I heard him say this," it'll matter.
So it's a question of what did Donald Trump know? And as we've seen in so many other cases, that becomes the key question of the question of knowledge. other cases, that becomes the key question of the question of knowledge. The hearing is set to begin in just a moment, so we want to pause briefly to give our NBC stations across the country a chance to join our special coverage.
This is an NBC News special report. An urgent new hearing from the January 6 Committee. A key witness set to come forward to testify live. The committee promising new evidence to be revealed today. Parted their investigation into the attack on the U.S. Capitol. Today, day six of the unprecedented congressional hearings.
President Trump summoned the mob, assembled the mob, and lit the flame of this attack.
As the January 6 Committee makes its case to the American people. Now reporting from Washington, here is Lester Holt.
It is the sixth day of hearings from the January 6 Committee, but it is perhaps the most dramatic. It's the first to feature the live testimony of a White House insider. And it comes unexpectedly, announced just 24 hours ago, partly due, we're told, to security concerns for today's witness. Many members were out of town for the July 4 recess and had to rush back for this hearing. The witness at the center of it all today, a 25-year-old former White House staffer named Cassidy Hutchinson. She was a top aide to President Trump's chief of staff, Mark Meadows, and she was there for many of the key moments leading up to the January, to January 6 and for the day itself. We have already heard some of her previously recorded testimony during these hearings, where she claimed that a half dozen Republican lawmakers had reached out for pardons after the 6. She was also reportedly the source who claimed President Trump said maybe the rioters had the right idea when they chanted, hang Mike Pence. She is expected to reveal more of what she knows during today's hearing. We want to go right now to Capitol Hill correspondent, Ali Vitale. We just heard the gavel go down, but actually, we'll get back to, we'll get back to you, Ali.
... United States Capitol will be in order. Without objection, the chair is authorized to declare the committee in recess at any point. Pursuant to House Deposition Authority Regulation 10, the chair announces the committee's approval to release the deposition material presented during this hearing. Good afternoon. In our hearings over the previous weeks, the Select Committee has laid out the details of a multi-part pressure campaign driven by the former president aimed at overturning the results of the 2020 presidential election and blocking the transfer of power. We've shown that this effort was based on a lie, a lie that the election was stolen, tainted by widespread fraud, Donald Trump's big lie. In the weeks ahead, the committee will hold additional hearings about how Donald Trump summoned a mob of his supporters to Washington, spurred them to march on the Capitol, and failed to take meaningful action to quell the violence as it was unfolding on January 6. However, in recent days, the Select Committee has obtained new information dealing with what was going on in the White House on January 6 and in the days prior. Specific detailed information about what the former president and his top aides were doing and saying in those critical hours. Firsthand details of what transpired in the office of the White House Chief of Staff, just steps from the Oval Office as the threats of violence became clear and indeed violence ultimately descended on the Capitol in the attack on American democracy. It's an important, it's important that the American people hear that information immediately. That's why, in consultation with the vice chair, I recall the committee for today's hearing. As you've seen and heard in our earlier hearings, the Select Committee has developed a massive body of evidence, thanks to the many hundreds of witnesses who have voluntarily provided information relevant to our investigation. It hasn't always been easy to get that information because the same people who drove the former president's pressure campaign to overturn the election are now trying to cover up the truth about January 6. But thanks to the courage of certain individuals, the truth won't be buried. The American people won't be left in the dark. Our witness today, Ms. Cassidy Hutchinson, has embodied that courage. I won't get into a lot of detail about Ms. Hutchinson's testimony. We'll show. I'll allow her words to speak for themselves. And I hope everyone at home will listen very closely. First, I'll recognize our distinguished vice chair, Ms. Cheney of Wyoming, for any opening statements she'd care to offer.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. In our first five hearings, the committee has heard from a significant number of Republicans, including former Trump administration Justice Department officials, Trump campaign officials, several members of President Trump's White House staff, a prominent conservative judge, and several others. Today's witness, Ms. Cassidy Hutchinson, is another Republican and another former member of President Trump's White House staff. Certain of us in the House of Representatives recall that Ms. Hutchinson once worked for House Republican Whip Steve Scalise. But she is also a familiar face on Capitol Hill because she held a prominent role in the White House Legislative Affairs Office, and later was the principal aide to President Trump's chief of staff, Mark Meadows. Ms. Hutchinson has spent considerable time up here on Capitol Hill, representing the Trump administration, and we welcome her back. Up until now, our hearings have each been organized to address specific elements of President Trump's plan to overturn the 2020 election. Today, we are departing somewhat from that model because Ms. Hutchinson's testimony touches on several important and cross-cutting topics, topics that are relevant to each of our future hearings. In her role working for the White House Chief of Staff, Ms. Hutchinson handled a vast number of sensitive issues. She worked in the West Wing, several steps down the hall from the Oval Office. Ms. Hutchinson spoke daily with members of Congress, with high-ranking officials in the administration, with senior White House staff, including Mr. Meadows, with White House counsel lawyers, and with Mr. Tony Ornato, who served as the White House Deputy Chief of Staff. She also worked on a daily basis with members of the Secret Service who were posted in the White House. In short, Ms. Hutchinson was in a position to know a great deal about the happenings in the Trump White House. Ms. Hutchinson has already sat for four videotaped interviews with committee investigators, and we thank her very much for her cooperation and for her courage. We will cover certain, but not all, relevant topics within Ms. Hutchinson's knowledge today. Again, our future hearings will supply greater detail, putting the testimony today in a broader and more complete context. Today, you will hear Ms. Hutchinson relate certain firsthand observations of President Trump's conduct on January 6. You will also hear new information regarding the actions and statements of Mr. Trump's senior advisers that day, including his chief of staff, Mark Meadows, and his White House counsel. And we will begin to examine evidence bearing on what President Trump and members of the White House staff knew about the prospect for violence on January 6, even before that violence began. To best communicate the information the committee has gathered, we will follow the practice of our recent hearings, playing videotaped testimony from Ms. Hutchinson and others, and also posing questions to Ms. Hutchinson live. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
Thank you very much. Our witness today is Ms. Cassidy Hutchinson, who served in the Trump administration in the White House Office of Legislative Affairs from 2019 to 2020, and as a special assistant to the president in the White House Chief of Staff's office from March 2020 through January 2021. I will now swear in our witness. The witness will please stand and raise her right hand. Do you swear firm on the penalty of perjury that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you. You may be seated. Let the record reflect the witness answered in the affirmative. I now recognize myself for questions. Ms. Hutchinson, I'd like to start with a few questions about your background. These are some photographs we've obtained highlighting your career. These show you with members of Congress, including Steve Scalise, as well as the White House with Leader Kevin McCarthy and Jim Jordan. Others show you with the president and members of Congress aboard Air Force One. Before you worked in the White House, you worked on Capitol Hill for Representative Steve Scalise, the Republican whip, and Senator Ted Cruz. And then in 2019, you moved to the White House and served there until the end of the Trump administration in 2020. When you started at the White House, you served in the Office of Legislative Affairs. We understand that you were initially hired as a staff assistant, but were soon promoted to a position of greater responsibility. Can you explain your role for the committee?
When I moved over to the White House Chief of Staff's office with Mr. Meadows when he became the fourth chief of staff, it's difficult to describe a typical day. I was a special assistant to the president and an advisor, advisor to the chief of staff. The days depended on what the president was doing that day, and that's kind of how my portfolio was reflected. I had a lot of outreach with members of Congress, senior cabinet, cabinet officials. We would work, I would work on policy issues with relevant internal components and members on the Hill, as well as security protocol at the White House complex for Mr. Meadows and the president.
And then you were, you received another promotion in March 2020. At that time, you became the principal aide to the new White House Chief of Staff, Mark Meadows. Is that right?
That's correct, sir.
What did a typical day look like for you in your work with Mr. Meadows?
It varied with what was going on. We spent a lot of time on the Hill. I spent time on the Hill independently, too, as I was his liaison for Capitol Hill. We did a lot of presidential travel engagements, but mostly I was there to serve what the chief of staff needed. And a lot of times, what the chief of staff needed was a reflection of what the president's schedule is detailed to do that day.
So is it fair to say that you spoke regularly in your position, both with members of Congress and with senior members of the Trump administration?
That's correct. That's a fair assessment, sir.
And would you say that in your work with Mr. Meadows, you were typically in contact with him and others in the White House throughout the day?
That's correct, sir. Mr. Meadows and I were in contact almost, pretty much throughout every day consistently.
Although so much of grave importance happens in the West Wing of the White House, it's quite a small building. Above me on the screen, you can see a map of the first floor of the West Wing of the White House. On the right, you can see the president's Oval Office. On the left, the chief of staff's office suite. Within the chief of staff's office suite is the heart of the West Wing, was your desk, which was between the vice president's office, Mr. Kushner's office, and the Oval Office. Ms. Hutchinson, is this an accurate depiction of where you were located?
It's accurate. It's a lot smaller than it looks.
Absolutely. Ms. Hutchinson, this is a photo that shows the short distance between your office and the president's Oval Office. And it only takes five to 10 seconds or so to walk down the hall from your office to the Oval Office. Is that right?
That's correct.
Thank you. Pursuant to the Section 5(c)(8) of House Resolution 503, the chair recognizes young woman from Wyoming, Ms. Cheney, for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, we will begin today with an exchange that first provided Ms. Hutchinson a tangible sense of the ongoing planning for the events of January 6. On January 2, four days before the attack on our Capitol, President Trump's lead lawyer, Mr. Giuliani, was meeting with White House Chief of Staff, Mark Meadows, and others. Ms. Hutchinson, do you remember Mr. Giuliani meeting with Mr. Meadows on January 2, 2021?
I do. He met with Mr. Meadows in the evening of January 2, 2021.
And we understand that you walked Mr. Giuliani out of the White House that night, and he talked to you about January 6. What do you remember him saying?
As Mr. Giuliani and I were walking to his vehicles that evening, he looked at me and said something to the effect of, Cass, are you excited for the 6? It's going to be a great day. I remember looking at him and saying, Rudy, could you explain what's happening on the 6? He had responded something to the effect of, we're going to the Capitol. It's going to be great. The president's going to be there. He's going to look powerful. He's, he's going to be with the members. He's going to be with the senators. Talk to the chief about it. Talk to the chief about it. He knows about it.
And did you go back then up to the West Wing and tell Mr. Meadows by your conversation with Mr. Giuliani?
I did. After Mr. Giuliani had left the campus that evening, I went back up to our office, and I found Mr. Meadows in his office on the couch. He was scrolling through his phone. I remember leaning against the doorway and saying, I had an interesting conversation with Rudy, Mark. It sounds like we're going to go to the Capitol. He didn't look up from his phone and said something to the effect of, there's a lot going on, Cass, but I don't know. Things might get real, real bad on January 6.
Ms. Hutchinson, Mr. Meadows is engaged in litigation with the committee to try to avoid testifying here. What, what was your reaction when he said to you, things might get real, real bad?
In the days before January 2, I was apprehensive about the 6. I had heard general plans for a rally. I had heard tentative movements to potentially go to the Capitol. But when hearing Rudy's take on January 6 and then Mark's response, that was the first, that evening was the first moment that I remember feeling scared and nervous for what could happen on January 6. And I had a deeper concern for what was happening with the planning aspects of it.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Today, we're going to be focusing primarily on the events of January 5 and 6 at the White House. But to begin and to frame the discussion, I want to talk about a conversation that you had with Mr. John Ratcliffe, the Director of National Intelligence. And you had this conversation in December of 2020. Mr. Ratcliffe was nominated by President Trump to oversee U.S. intelligence, our U.S. intelligence community. And before his appointment, Mr. Ratcliffe was a Republican member of Congress. As you will see on this clip, Director Ratcliffe's comments in December of 2020 were prescient.
My understanding was Mr. Director Ratcliffe didn't want much to do with the post-election period. Director Ratcliffe felt that it wasn't something that the White House should be pursuing. It felt it was dangerous for the president's legacy. He had expressed to me that he was concerned that it could spiral out of control and potentially be dangerous, either for our democracy or the way that things were going for the 6.
When you say it wasn't something the White House should be pursuing, what's the "it"?
Trying to fight the results of the election, finding missing ballots, pressuring, filing lawsuits in certain states where there didn't seem to be significant evidence, and reaching out to state legislatures about that. So pretty much the way that the White House is handling the post-election period, he felt that there could be dangers for repercussions in terms of precedent set for elections for our democracy for the 6. He was hoping that we would concede.
So, Ms. Hutchinson, now we're going to turn to certain information that was available before January 4, and what the Trump administration and the president knew about the potential for violence before January 6. On the screen, you will see an email received by acting Deputy Attorney General Donahue on January 4 from the National Security Division of the Department of Justice. Mr. Donahue testified in our hearings last week. The email identifies apparent planning by those coming to Washington on January 6 to, quote, occupy federal buildings, and discussions of, quote, invading the Capitol Building. Here's what Mr. Donahue said to us.
And we knew that if you have tens of thousands of very obsessive people showing up in Washington, D.C., that there was potential for violence.
The U.S. Secret Service was looking at similar information and watching the planned demonstrations. In fact, their intelligence division sent several emails to White House personnel, like Deputy Chief of Staff Tony Ornato and the head of the president's protective detail, Robert Engel, including certain materials listing events like those on the screen. The White House continued to receive updates about planned demonstrations, including information regarding the Proud Boys organizing and planning to attend events on January 6. Although Ms. Hutchinson has no detailed knowledge of any planning involving the Proud Boys for January 6, she did note this.
I recall hearing the word Oath Keeper and hearing the word Proud Boys. I recall hearing the word "Oath Keeper" and hearing the word "Proud Boys" closer to the planning of the January 6th rally when Mr. Giuliani would be around.
On January 3rd, the Capitol Police issued a special event assessment. In that document, the Capitol Police noted that the Proud Boys and other groups planned to be in Washington, D.C. on January 6th, and indicated that, quote, "Unlike previous post-election protests, the targets of the pro-Trump supporters are not necessarily the counter protesters as they were previously, but rather Congress itself is the target on the 6th." Of course, we all know now that the Proud Boys showed up on January 6th, marched from the Washington Monument to the Capitol that day, and led the riotous mob to invade and occupy our Capitol. Ms. Hutchinson, I want to play you a clip of one of our meetings, when you described a call on January 4th that you received from National Security Advisor Robert O'Brien on the same topic, potential violence on January 6th.
I received a call from Robert O'Brien, the National Security Advisor. He had asked if he could speak with Mr. Meadows about potential violence, words of violence that he was hearing that were potentially going to happen on the Hill on January 6th. I had asked if he had connected with Tony Ornato, because Tony Ornato had a conversation with him, with Mark, about that topic. Robert had said, "I'll talk to Tony." And then, I don't know if Robert ever connected with Mark about the issue.
Ms. Hutchinson, can you describe for us Mr. Ornato's responsibilities as Deputy Chief of Staff?
The Deputy Chief of Staff position at the White House for operations is arguably one of the most important positions that somebody can hold. They're in charge of all security protocol for the campus and all presidential protectees, primarily the President and the First Family, but anything that requires security for any individual that has presidential protection, so the Chief of Staff or the National Security Advisor, as well as the Vice President's team, too. Tony would oversee all of that, and he was the conduit for security protocol between White House staff and the United States Secret Service.
Thank you. And you also described a brief meeting between Mr. Ornato and Mr. Meadows on the potential for violence. The meeting was on January 4th. They were talking about the potential for violence on January 6th. Let's listen to a clip of that testimony.
I remember Mr. Ornato had talked to him about intelligence reports. I remember Mr. Ornato coming in and saying that we had intel reports saying that there could potentially be violence on the 6th.
You also told us about reports of violence and weapons that the Secret Service were receiving on the night of January 5th and throughout the day on January 6th. Is that correct?
That's correct.
There are reports that police in Washington, D.C. had arrested several people with firearms or ammunition following a separate pro-Trump rally in Freedom Plaza on the evening of January 5th. Are those some of the reports that you recall hearing about?
They are.
Of course, the world now knows that the people who attacked the Capitol on January 6th had many different types of weapons. When a President speaks, the Secret Service typically requires those attending to pass through metal detectors, known as magnetometers, or MAGs for short. The Select Committee has learned that people who willingly entered the enclosed area for President Trump's speech were screened so they could attend the rally at the Ellipse. They had weapons and other items that were confiscated: pepper spray, knives, brass knuckles, tasers, body armor, gas masks, batons, blunt weapons. And those were just from the people who chose to go through the security for the President's event on the Ellipse, not the several thousand members of the crowd who refused to go through the MAGs and watched from the lawn near the Washington Monument. The Select Committee has learned about reports from outside the magnetometers and has obtained police radio transmissions identifying individuals with firearms, including AR-15s, near the Ellipse on the morning of January 6th. Let's listen.
There's an individual in a tree, maybe a white male, about six feet tall, tan built, brown cowboy boots. He's got blue jeans and a blue jean jacket. And underneath the blue jean jacket, he was complaining, both saw a stock of AR-15. He's going to be with a group of individuals, about five, eight, five, eight other individuals. Two of the individuals in that group at the base of the tree, near the porta potties, were wearing green fatigues, green olive dress, now fatigues, about 5'8", 5'9", skinny, skinny white males, brown cowboy boots. They had Glock-style pistols in their waistband.
8736 with the message that subject's weapon on his right hip. That he's in the tree.
Motor one, make sure PPD knows they have an elevated threat in the trees outside of Constitution Avenue. Look for the "Don't tread on me" flag, American flag, face mask, cowboy boots, weapon on the right, right side hip.
We've got three men walking down the street. It's a team carrying AR-15s. Copy at 14th and Independence.
AR-15s at 14th and Independence. As you saw in those emails, the first report that we showed, we now know was sent in the 8 o'clock hour on January 6th. This talked about people in the crowd wearing ballistic helmets and body armor, carrying radio equipment and military-grade backpacks. The second report we showed you on the screen was sent by the Secret Service in the 11 a.m. hour, and it addressed reports of a man with a rifle near the Ellipse. Ms. Hutchinson, in prior testimony, you described for us a meeting in the White House around 10 a.m. in the morning of January 6th, involving Chief of Staff Meadows and Tony Ornato. Were you in that meeting?
I was.
Let's listen to your testimony about that meeting, and then we'll have some questions.
I think the last time we talked, you mentioned that some of the weapons that people had at the rally included flagpoles, oversized sticks or flagpoles, bear spray. Is there anything else that you recall hearing about that the people who had gathered on the Ellipse had?
I recall Tony and I having a conversation with Mark probably around 10 a.m., 10:15 a.m., where I remember Tony mentioning knives, guns, in the form of pistols and rifles, bear spray, body armor, spears, and flagpoles. Spears were one item, flagpoles were one item, and then Tony had relayed to me something to the effect of, "And these effing people are fastening spears onto the ends of flagpoles."
And, Ms. Hutchinson, here's a clip of your testimony regarding Mr. Meadows' response to learning that the rally attendees were armed that day.
What was Mark's reaction, Mr. Meadows' reaction, to this list of weapons that people had in the crowd?
When Tony and I went in to talk to Mark that morning, Mark was sitting on his couch and on his phone, which was something typical. I remember Tony just got right into it. I was like, "Sorry, I just wanted to let you know," and informed him, like, "This is how many people we have outside the MAGs right now. These are the weapons that we're known to have. It's possible he listed more weapons off that I just don't recall." And gave him a brief but inconcise explanation, but also fairly thorough. And I remember distinctly Mark not looking up from his phone. I remember Tony finishing his explanation and it taking a few seconds for Mark to say his name, to the point where I almost said, "Mark, did you hear him?" And then Mark chatted, was like, "All right, anything else?" Still looking down at his phone. And Tony looked at me, and I looked at Tony, and Tony said, "No, sir. Do you have any questions?" He's like, "What are you hearing?" And I looked at Tony, and I was like, "Sir, he just told you about what was happening down at the rally." He was like, "Yeah, yeah, I know." And then he looked up and said, "Have you talked to the President?" And Tony said, "Yes, sir. He is where to." He said, "All right, good."
He asked Tony if Tony had informed the President?
Yes.
And Tony said, "Yes, he had."
So, Ms. Hutchinson, is it your understanding that Mr. Ornato told the President about weapons at the rally on the morning of January 6th?
That's what Mr. Ornato relayed to me.
And here's how you characterize Mr. Meadows' general response when people raised concerns about what could happen on January 6th.
So, at the time, in the days leading up to the 6th, there were lots of public reports about how things might go bad on the 6th, even the potential for violence. If I'm hearing you correctly, what stands out to you is that Mr. Meadows did not share those concerns, or at least did not act on those concerns?
Did not act on those concerns would be accurate.
But other people raised them to him, like in this exchange you mentioned that Mr. Ornato pulled them aside?
That's correct.
Ms. Hutchinson, we're going to show now an exchange of texts between you and Deputy Chief of Staff Ornato. And these text messages were exchanged while you were at the Ellipse. In one text, you write, "But the crowd looks good from this vantage point, as long as we get the shot." He was effing furious. And the text messages also stress that President Trump kept mentioning the OTR, an off-the-record movement. We're going to come back and ask you about that in a minute. But could you tell us, first of all, who it is in the text who was furious?
The he in that text that I was referring to was the President.
And why was he furious, Ms. Hutchinson?
He was furious because he wanted the arena that we had on the Ellipse to be maxed out at capacity for all attendees. The advance team had relayed to him that the MAGs were free-flowing. Everybody who wanted to come in had already come in, but he still was angry about the extra space and wanted more people to come in.
And did you go to the rally in the Presidential motorcade?
I was there, yes, in the motorcade.
And were you backstage with the President and other members of his staff and family?
I was.
And you told us, Ms. Hutchinson, about particular comments that you heard while you were in the tent area.
When we were in the offstage announce area tent behind the stage, he was very concerned about the shot, meaning the photograph that we would get, because the rally space wasn't full. One of the reasons, which I previously stated, was because he wanted it to be full and for people to not feel excluded, because they'd come far to watch him at the rally. And he felt the MAGs were at fault for not letting everybody in. But another leading reason, and likely the primary reason, is because he wanted it full, and he was angry that we weren't letting people through the MAGs with weapons, what the Secret Service deemed as weapons and are weapons. But when we were in the offstage announce tent, I was part of a conversation, I was in the vicinity of a conversation where I overheard the President say something to the effect of, "You know, I don't effing care that they have weapons. They're not here to hurt me. Take the effing MAGs away. Let my people in. They can march to the Capitol from here. Let the people in. Take the effing MAGs away."
Just to be clear, Ms. Hutchinson, is it your understanding that the President wanted to take the MAGs away and said that the armed individuals were not there to hurt him?
That's a fair assessment.
The issue wasn't with the amount of space available in the official rally area only, but instead that people did not want to have to go through the MAGs. Let's listen to a portion of what you told us about that.
In this particular instance, it wasn't the capacity of our space, it was the MAGs and the people that didn't want to come through. And that's what Tony had been trying to relay to him that morning. You know, it's not the issues that we encountered on the campaign, we have enough space, or they don't want to come in right now. They have weapons that they don't want confiscated by the Secret Service, and they're fine on the mall, they can see you on the mall, and they want to march straight to the Capitol from the mall.
The President apparently wanted all attendees inside the official rally space and repeatedly said, quote, "They're not here to hurt me."
And just to be clear, so he was told again in that conversation, or was he told again in that conversation, that people couldn't come through the MAGs because they had weapons?
Correct.
And that people, and his response was to say they can march to the Capitol from, is it, from the Ellipse?
Something to the effect of, "Take the effing MAGs away. They're not here to hurt me. Let them in. Let my people in. They can march to the Capitol after the rally's over. They can march from, they can march from the Ellipse. Take the effing MAGs away. Then they can march to the Capitol."
Ms. Hutchinson, what we saw when those clips were playing were photos provided by the National Archives showing the President in the offstage tent before his speech on the Ellipse. You were in some of those photos as well. And I just want to confirm that that is when you heard the President say the people with weapons weren't there to hurt him, and that he wanted the Secret Service to remove the magnetometers.
That's correct. In the photos that you displayed, we were standing towards the front of the tent with the TVs, really close to where he would walk out to go onto the stage. Did these conversations happen two to three minutes before he took the stage that morning?
Let's reflect on that for a moment. President Trump was aware that a number of the individuals in the crowd had weapons and were wearing body armor. And here's what President Trump instructed the crowd to do.
We're going to walk down, and I'll be there with you. We're going to walk down. We're going to walk down. Anyone you want, but I think right here, we're going to walk down to the Capitol.
And the crowd, as we know, did proceed to the Capitol. It soon became apparent to the Secret Service, including the Secret Service teams in the crowd, along with White House staff, that security at the Capitol would not be sufficient.
I had two or three phone conversations with Mr. Ornato when we were at the Ellipse, and then I had four men on Mr. Meadows' detail with me. And between those individuals and a few other bodies on the ground, the Secret Service doing advance, they were getting notifications through their radios. And Mr. Ornato, in one phone conversation, had called me and said, "Make sure the Chief knows that they're getting closer to the Capitol. They're having trouble stacking bodies."
And, Ms. Hutchinson, when you said they were having trouble stacking bodies, did you mean that law enforcement at the Capitol needed more people to defend the Capitol from the rioters?
It was becoming clear to us and to the Secret Service that Capitol Police officers were getting overrun at the security barricades outside of the Capitol Building, and they were having short, they were short people to defend the building against the rioters.
And you mentioned that Mr. Ornato was conveying this to you because he wanted you to tell Mr. Meadows. So, did you tell Mr. Meadows that people were getting closer to the Capitol and that Capitol Police was having difficulty?
After I had the conversation with Mr. Meadows, after I had the conversation with Mr. Ornato, I went to have the discussion with Mr. Meadows. He was in a secure vehicle at the time, making a call. So, when I had gone over to the car, I went to open the door to let him know, and he had immediately shut it. I don't know who he was speaking with. It wasn't something that he regularly did, especially when I would go over to give him information. So, I was a bit taken aback, but I didn't think much of it, thinking that I would be able to have the conversation with him a few moments later.
And were you able to have that conversation a few moments later?
Probably about 20 to 25 minutes later. There was another period in between where he shut the door again. And then, when he finally got out of the vehicle, we had the conversation. But at that point, there was a backlog of information that he should have been made aware of.
And so, you opened the door to the control car, and Mr. Meadows pulled it shut?
That's correct.
And he did that two times?
That's correct.
And when you finally were able to give Mr. Meadows the information about the violence at the Capitol, what was his reaction?
He almost had a lack of reaction. I remember him saying, "All right," something to the effect of, "How much longer does the President have left in his speech?"
Again, much of this information about the potential for violence was known or learned before the onset of the violence, early enough for President Trump to take steps to prevent it. He could, for example, have urged the crowd at the Ellipse not to march to the Capitol. He could have condemned the violence immediately, once it began, or he could have taken multiple other steps. But as we will see today and in later hearings, President Trump had something else in mind. One other question at this point, Ms. Hutchinson, were you aware of concerns that White House Counsel Pat Cipollone or Eric Hirschman had about the language President Trump used in his Ellipse speech?
There were many discussions the morning of the 6th about the rhetoric of the speech that day. In my conversations with Mr. Hirschman, he had relayed that we would be... In my conversations with Mr. Hirschman, he had relayed that we would be foolish to include language that had been included at the president's request, which headlines along to the effect of, "Fight for Trump. We're going to march to the Capitol. I'll be there with you. Fight for me. Fight for what we're doing. Fight for the movement." Things about the vice president at the time, too. Both Mr. Hirschman and White House Counsel's office were urging the speechwriters to not include that language for legal concerns and also for the optics of what it could portray the president wanting to do that day.
And we just heard the president say that he would be with his supporters as they marched to the Capitol, even though he did not end up going, he certainly wanted to. Some have questioned whether President Trump genuinely planned to come here to the Capitol on January 6th. In his book, Mark Meadows falsely wrote that after President Trump gave his speech on January 6th, he told Mr. Meadows that he was, quote, "speaking metaphorically about the walk to the Capitol." As you will see, Donald Trump was not speaking metaphorically. As we heard earlier, Rudy Giuliani told Ms. Hutchinson that Mr. Trump plans to travel to the Capitol on January 6th. I want to pause for just a moment to ask you, Ms. Hutchinson, to explain some of the terminology you will hear today. We've heard you use two different terms to describe plans for the president's movement to the Capitol or anywhere else. One of those is a scheduled movement, and another one is OTR. Could you describe for us what each of those mean?
A scheduled presidential movement is on his official schedule. It's notified to the press and to a wide range of staff that will be traveling with him. It's known to the public, known to the Secret Service, and they're able to coordinate the movement days in advance. An off-the-record movement is confined to the knowledge of a very, very small group of advisers and staff. Typically, a very small group of staff would travel with him, mostly that are just included in the national security package. You can pull an off-the-record movement together in less than an hour. It's a way to kind of circumvent having to release it to the press, if that's the goal of it, or to not have to have as many security parameters put in place ahead of time to make the movement happen.
Thank you. And let's turn back now to the president's plans to travel to the Capitol on January 6th. We know that White House Counsel Pat Cipollone was concerned about the legal implications of such a trip, and he agreed with the Secret Service that it shouldn't happen. Ms. Hutchinson, did you have any conversations with Pat Cipollone about his concerns about the president going to the Capitol on January 6th?
On January 3rd, Mr. Cipollone had approached me, knowing that Mark had raised the prospect of going up to the Capitol on January 6th. Mr. Cipollone and I had a brief, private conversation where he said to me, "We need to make sure that this doesn't happen. This would be legally a terrible idea for us. We have serious legal concerns if we go up to the Capitol that day." And he then urged me to continue relaying that to Mr. Meadows, because it's my understanding that Mr. Cipollone thought that Mr. Meadows was indeed pushing this along with the president.
And we understand, Ms. Hutchinson, that you also spoke to Mr. Cipollone on the morning of the 6th, as you were about to go to the rally on the Ellipse. And Mr. Cipollone said something to you, like, "Make sure the movement to the Capitol does not happen." Is that correct?
That's correct. I saw Mr. Cipollone right before I walked out onto West Exec that morning, and Mr. Cipollone said something to the effect of, "Please make sure we don't go up to the Capitol, Cassidy. Keep in touch with me. We're going to get charged with every crime imaginable if we make that movement happen."
And do you remember which crimes Mr. Cipollone was concerned with?
In the days leading up to the 6th, we had conversations about potentially obstructing justice or defrauding the electoral count.
Let's hear about some of those concerns that you mentioned earlier in one of your interviews with us.
Having a private conversation with Pat late in the afternoon of the 3rd or the 4th, that Pat was concerned it would look like we were obstructing justice or obstructing the Electoral College count, and I apologize for probably not being very firm with my legal terms here, but that it would look like we were obstructing what was happening on Capitol Hill. And he was also worried that it would look like we were inciting a riot or encouraging a riot to erupt on the Capitol, at the Capitol.
In fact, in the days before January 6th, and on January 6th itself, President Trump expressed to multiple White House aides that he wanted to go to the Capitol after his speech. Here's what various White House aides have told the committee about the president's desire to go to the Capitol.
Did the president tell you this, that he wanted to speak at the Capitol?
Correct, yes.
During the meeting in the dining room, did the idea of the president proceeding or walking to the Capitol on the 6th after his speech come up?
Walking to the Capitol? No.
Driving to the Capitol?
It came up.
Okay, how did it come up and what was discussed?
He brought it up. He said, "I want to go down to the Capitol."
What about him marching to the Capitol on the 6th?
Yes.
Tell us about that.
So, it's kind of a general thing, I mean, to get into the specifics of it. I was aware of the desire of the president to potentially march to the, or accompany the rally attendees to the Capitol.
When did you first hear about this idea of the president accompanying rally attendees to the Capitol on the 6th?
Well, this was at the 6th. This was during the, after he finished his remarks.
When the president said that he would be going to the Capitol during his speech on the Ellipse, the Secret Service scrambled to find a way for him to go. We know this from witnesses and the Secret Service, also from messages among staff on the president's National Security Council. The NSC staff were monitoring the situation in real time, and you can see how the situation evolved in the following chat log that the committee has obtained. As you can see, NSC staff believed that Mogul, the president, was, quote, "going to the Capitol," and, quote, "they are finding the best route now." From these chats, we also know the staff learned of the attack on the Capitol in real time. When President Trump left the Ellipse stage at 1:10, the staff knew that rioters had invaded the inaugural stage, and Capitol Police were calling for all available officers to respond. When Republican leader Kevin McCarthy heard the president say he was going to the Capitol, he called you, Ms. Hutchinson. Isn't that right?
That's correct.
And in this text message, you told Tony Ornato, quote, "McCarthy just called me too, and do you guys think you're coming to my office?" Tell us about the call that day with Leader McCarthy during the president's speech on the Ellipse.
I was still in the tent behind the stage, and when you're behind the stage, you can't really hear what's going on in front of you. So when Mr. McCarthy called me with this information, I answered the call, and he sounded rushed, but also frustrated and angry at me. And I was confused because I didn't know what the president had just said. He then explained, "The president just said he's marching to the Capitol. You told me this whole week, you aren't coming up here. Why would you lie to me?" I said, "I'm not lying. I wasn't lying to you, sir. We're not going to the Capitol." And he said, "Well, he just said it on stage, Cassidy. Figure it out. Don't come up here." I said, "I'll run the traps on this note. I'll shoot you a text. I can assure you, we're not coming up to the Capitol. We've already made that decision." He pressed a little bit more believing me, but I think frustrated that the president had said that. And we ended the phone conversation after that. I called Mr. Ornato to reconfirm that we weren't going to the Capitol, and, which was also in our text messages. I sent Mr. McCarthy another text telling him the affirmative that we were not going up to the Capitol, and he didn't respond after that.
And we understand, Ms. Hutchinson, that the plans for the president to come up to the Capitol had included discussions at some point about what the president would do when he came up to the Capitol on January 6th. Let's look at a clip of one of your interviews discussing that issue with the committee.
When you were talking about a scheduled movement, did anyone say what the president wanted to do when he got here?
Not that I can specifically remember. I remember, I remember hearing a few different ideas discussed with, between Mark and Scott Perry, Mark and Rudy Giuliani. I don't know which conversations were elevated to the president. I don't know what he personally wanted to do when he went up to the Capitol that day. You know, I know that there were discussions about him having another speech outside of the Capitol before going in. I know that there was a conversation about him going into the House chamber at one point.
As we've all just heard, in the days leading up to January 6th, on the day of the speech, both before and during and after the rally speech, President Trump was pushing his staff to arrange for him to come up here to the Capitol during the electoral vote count. Let's turn now to what happened in the president's vehicle when the Secret Service told him he would not be going to the Capitol after his speech. First, here is the president's motorcade leaving the Ellipse after his speech on January Ms. Hutchinson, when you returned to the White House in the motorcade after the president's speech, where did you go?
When I returned to the White House, I walked upstairs towards the Chief of Staff's office, and I noticed Mr. Ornato lingering outside of the office. Once we had made eye contact, he quickly waved me to go into his office, which was just across the hall from mine. When I went in, he shut the door, and I noticed Bobby Engel, who was the head of Mr. Trump's security detail, sitting in a chair, looking somewhat discombobulated and a little lost. And I looked at Tony, and he had said, "Did you effing hear what happened in the Beast?" I said, "No, Tony, I just got back. What happened?" Tony proceeded to tell me that when the president got in the Beast, he was under the impression, from Mr. Meadows, that the off-the-record movement to the Capitol was still possible and likely to happen, but that Bobby had more information. So once the president had gotten into the vehicle with Bobby, he thought that they were going up to the Capitol, and when Bobby had relayed to him, "We're not. We don't have the assets to do it. It's not secure. We're going back to the West Wing." The president had very strong, a very angry response to that. Tony described him as being irate. The president said something to the effect of, "I'm the effing president. Take me up to the Capitol now." To which Bobby responded, "Sir, we have to go back to the West Wing." The president reached up towards the front of the vehicle to grab at the steering wheel. Mr. Engel grabbed his arm, said, "Sir, you need to take your hand off the steering wheel. We're going back to the West Wing. We're not going to the Capitol." Mr. Trump then used his free hand to lunge towards Bobby Engel, and when Mr. Ornato had recounted this story to me, he had motioned towards his clavicles.
And was Mr. Engel in the room as Mr. Ornato told you this story?
He was.
Did Mr. Engel correct or disagree with any part of the story from Mr. Ornato?
Mr. Engel did not correct or disagree with any part of the story.
Did Mr. Engel or Mr. Ornato ever after that tell you that what Mr. Ornato had just said was untrue?
Neither Mr. Ornato nor Mr. Engel told me ever that it was untrue.
And despite this altercation, this physical altercation during the ride back to the White House, President Trump still demanded to go to the Capitol. Here's what Kayleigh McEnany, the White House Press Secretary at the time, wrote in her personal notes and told the committee about President Trump's desire to go to the Capitol after returning to the White House.
When you wrote, "He wanted to walk to the Capitol," was that based solely on what the president said during his speech, or anything that he or anybody else said afterwards?
So, to the best of my recollection, I believe when we got back to the White House, he said he wanted to physically walk with the marchers, and according to my notes, he then said he'd be fine with just riding the Beast. But to the best of my recollection, he wanted to be a part of the march in some fashion.
Okay, and just for the record, the Beast refers to the presidential limousine?
Yes.
President Trump did not go to the Capitol that day. We understand that he blamed Mark Meadows for that.
So prior to leaving the rally site, when he got off the stage and everybody was making the movement back to the motorcade, I had overheard Mr. Meadows say to him then, as I had prior to Mr. Trump taking the stage that morning, that he was still working on getting an off-the-record movement to the Capitol. So when Mr. Trump took the stage, he was under the impression via Mr. Meadows that it was still possible. So when he got off the stage, I had relayed to Mr. Meadows that I had another conversation with Tony. The movement was still not possible. Mr. Meadows said, "Okay." And then, as they proceeded to go to the motorcade, and Mr. Meadows had reiterated, "We're going to work on it. Sir, talk to Bobby. Bobby has more information." Mark got into his vehicle, to my understanding. Trump got into the Beast. And after we had all arrived back at the White House later in the day, it had been relayed to me via Mark that the president wasn't happy that Bobby didn't pull it off for him, and that Mark didn't work hard enough to get the movement on the books.
The physical altercation that Ms. Hutchinson described in the presidential vehicle was not the first time that the president had become very angry about issues relating to the election. On December 1, 2020, Attorney General Barr said in an interview that the Department of Justice had not found evidence of widespread election fraud sufficient to change the outcome of the election. Ms. Hutchinson, how did the president react to hearing that news?
Around the time that, I understand, the AP article went live, I remember hearing noise coming from down the hallway, so I poked my head out of the office, and I saw the valet walking towards our office. He had said, "Get the chief down to the dining room. The president wants him." So Mark went down to the dining room, came back to the office a few minutes later. After Mark had returned, I left the office and went down to the dining room, and I noticed that the door was propped open, and the valet was inside the dining room changing the tablecloth off of the dining room table. He motioned for me to come in and then pointed towards the front of the room near the fireplace mantle and the TV, where I first noticed there was ketchup dripping down the wall, and there was a shattered porcelain plate on the floor. The valet had articulated that the president was extremely angry at the Attorney General's AP interview and had thrown his lunch against the wall, which was causing them to have to clean up. So I grabbed a towel and started wiping the ketchup off of the wall to help the valet out, and he said something to the effect of, "He's really ticked off about this." I would stay clear of him for right now. He's really, really ticked off about this right now.
And Ms. Hutchinson, was this the only instance that you are aware of where the president threw dishes?
It's not.
And are there other instances in the dining room that you recall where he expressed his anger?
There were several times throughout my tenure with the Chief of Staff that I was aware of him either throwing dishes or flipping the tablecloth to let all the contents of the table go onto the floor and likely break or go everywhere.
And Ms. Hutchinson, Attorney General Barr described to the committee the president's angry reaction when he finally met with President Trump. Let's listen.
And I said, "Look, I..."
And I said, "Look, I know that you're dissatisfied with me, and I'm glad to offer my resignation." And then he pounded the table very hard, and everyone saw the jump, and he said, "Accept it."
Mr. Chairman, I reserve.
John Warren Reserves, the chair requests those in the hearing room to remain seated until the Capitol Police have escorted our witness from the room pursuant to the order of the committee of today. The chair declares the committee in recess for a period of approximately 10 minutes.
We have been listening to the testimony of Cassidy Hutchinson, a former executive assistant to then White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows, testimony that can only be described as explosive. Chuck Todd, I'm not sure where to start.
I am explosive, almost underplace, what we just heard. I mean, look, before the description of the former president's unhinged behavior, where he attacked his lead Secret Service detail, which I'm still trying to digest, she does make it clear, I think in a very compelling way, that for days, everybody in and around the president knew that January 6th was going to be potentially explosive, knew it could become violent. The opening, I mean, every part of this testimony sort of had revelation after revelation, beginning with that opening anecdote about Rudy Giuliani essentially informing Ms. Hutchinson of what they at least thought the plan would be. But so, you know, as far as building the case about what the president knew and when he knew it and how illegal his acts were, boy, did she paint a damning picture. As I called her a human dot connector, and she connected a bunch of dots. But then you throw in the sort of physical unhinged behavior of the former president with those two anecdotes, one, throwing a plate of food in reaction to Bill Barr's interview with the Associated Press, where he publicly stated that there was no widespread election fraud. But then the incident with the Secret Service detail and that description, she's in the office of the Deputy Chief of Staff, Mr. Ornato, who himself was a former lead of the president. The lead Secret Service detail the president attacked is in the room as she's being told this story. So the point is, it really paints a very damning picture of the president. And, you know, it's interesting, Lester, we go through this, and nothing shocks when it comes to the former president, but the idea that he tried to grab the wheel, this was clearly, she is painting a picture of somebody who was very unhinged. I don't know what other word to use, but if that is exactly, based on her testimony, that is an unhinged actor that she is portraying.
And Chuck, let's not forget, she also described, well, actually, she doesn't describe, we actually hear the radio transmission of police as they're spotting people in the crowd at the ellipse with high-powered weapons. As she tells it, the president gains knowledge of what's happening there, wants to press forward to set aside the magnetometers and let people come in, even after hearing reports of things like AR-15s.
Well, and Lester, if I can interrupt, I think this testimony is so important, and that because, you know, one of the arguments that many Republicans try to make, that attempt to defend the former president, maybe they don't defend his personal actions, but basically say, "Hey, this place was unprepared." We now have testimony that essentially, that it's clear they knew this was going to happen, and clearly, they withheld some of the most biggest concern that the Capitol Police should have known about, right? You think anybody, you think the Capitol Police knew what Rudy Giuliani said to Ms. Hutchinson? You know, had they known that information four days before? That puts everything in a different context for me, I know it does, and I assume for a lot of people, because again, this is not a security failure that everybody at the Capitol should have been prepared for. This was an intentional act by Trump and his cronies to essentially make sure that they could cause a ruckus at the Capitol. I mean, she's connecting that dot more than just with dots, with dashes there. It's a pretty straight line.
Let me bring in Peter Alexander. Peter, you and I both have feverish scribbling notes, and remarking to each other that this is a 25-year-old young woman who is literally at the center of power, witness to these events and around these powerful people.
Well, it's stunning courage for anybody, but certainly for a 25-year-old, and you're struck by the fact that this 25-year-old, she wasn't a fly on the wall. She was literally an insider who was in those conversations, where messages were being communicated to her from the White House Counsel, the top lawyer for the White House, to the Chief of Staff on occasion. And what she did here that I think is so critical is that she gave voice to those individuals who have not come forward and testified on their own behalf, most notably President Donald Trump. We've been trying to see, and the key words to watch today were if she could say, "I heard him say." And she says, "I heard the president say," when they were standing behind the curtain in effect on the January 6th speech that he gave at the ellipse, she said, "I don't care that they have weapons. Take the mags away, the security magnetometers away. They aren't here to hurt me. They can march from here." Those are the words that she says she heard the president communicate, even after it was shared with him, that there were individuals carrying AR-15s, brass knuckles, other weapons that were just outside the gates of where he would be delivering that speech. She said about Pat Cipollone, the White House Counsel, that he communicated to her his serious legal concerns about the president's desire to go up to Capitol Hill on that day. He said that they were going to get charged with every crime imaginable if they did that. That is the White House Counsel telling her, "We cannot do this for all these reasons," to say nothing of the moments that were communicated to her in the room with the president's head of security, Mr. Engel, and also with Mr. Ornato, the head of operations, about that dramatic moment that played out inside the president's limousine, his SUV, when he put his hands on the wheel, put his hands on the neck of his top security individual aide, as described, saying, "Send this thing up to the Capitol."
And just to be clear, when people think of the beast, the presidential limo, we think of that large, I don't know if it's a GM or Cadillac or whatever, but very big sedan. In this case, we saw the picture of the president being wheeled away. He's in an SUV which is used from time to time.
No doubt, which would have enabled him to reach up, right? In the beast, I've never been inside, but we know there's protective glass and the like that exists in there, and that SUV, as you saw, and the committee was clear to show what he was traveling in, he could have reached to the steering wheel that was in the front, and the security aide who would have been sitting in the front row as well.
Let me bring Danny into all this. You're listening with a lawyer's ear. They're very specific about what she heard and what she heard secondhand. This is not a trial, we keep pointing out, this is not a trial, it's not an impeachment, but it is interesting in terms of how we weigh her credibility. How would you weigh what we've heard so far?
You will hear people complain, probably on the right, that a lot of this is hearsay. It's Hutchinson reporting what was told to her by somebody else. And it's true that in court, hearsay is often excluded, but it has so many exceptions. It is a rule of Swiss cheese. There are so many holes in the rule, so many that could scarcely be said to be a rule anymore. But the reality is, we're not in court, and sometimes hearsay is totally reliable, and that's why we have so many exceptions to the rule. And for that reason, some of this hearsay may be reliable. It doesn't mean that it's not. So you look at the source itself, and if that source itself is checkable, verifiable, then it's not going to be something that should be discarded out of hand. Similarly here, since we don't have the rules of evidence applying, you should take it for what it's worth.
All right, Danny, thank you. Let me go to Ali Vitale, who's outside the hearing room. Ali, I've got to wonder what you were seeing inside the room, the reaction to some of the bombshells she's dropped, especially describing this picture of a president lunging for his Secret Service protector to take a hold of the wheel of the car.
Lester, that was one of the really striking moments in the room. You saw people's eyes almost pop out of their head as she described that moment of the former president lunging for the steering wheel and the head of his security saying, "I'm going to need you to take your hand off that steering wheel." I've been in the room at every single one of these hearings, and what I can tell you is that there's always an anticipation and almost excitement in the room, but this had such a heaviness to it. It's clear that this was different. The seating arrangements were different. Those officers who were so impacted by what happened here on January 6th were no longer at the front of the room, but towards the back, because they meant for this to be something that the focus was only on Cassidy Hutchinson, and certainly, that was the case. I do think that everyone in there, sometimes people might zone out, they might look away, they look at their phone. Instead, during this hearing, every single person in that room was glued to the screen. They were perked up and listening the entire time, almost as if they were afraid to miss the bombshell. And certainly, bombshell after bombshell have happened in this hearing. The committee clearly not overpromising when they said that they were going to have this surprise witness here in the room. I thought the whole thing was striking, and certainly, as the chairman gavelled to a recess, we had at least one Democratic lawmaker stand and applaud for Hutchinson as she left the room. It sort of speaks to the feeling of gratitude among those who have been impacted by this day, that this young woman would go through so much. We know that there's security threats here. We know how hard, and you guys have all spoken to the fact that it must be so hard and so pressure-filled to be a young woman at the center of this right now. But certainly, there was a feeling of gratitude in that room from so many of the people who were impacted by January 6th, that she would be here and testify to so many of these striking moments that she's already spoken to. And look, it's clear, they're not even done yet, Lester.
Yeah, there's more to come. Ali, 10-minute break, we should point it right now. Ali, thank you very much. Let me go to our Washington correspondent, Yamiche Alcindor. You've been sampling some reaction from supporters of the former president. How are they characterizing what we're seeing?
Well, Lester, supporters of former President Trump, and even aides who were helping try to contest the election on his behalf, are shocked by what they just heard. I've been getting text messages in all caps saying, "Wow, the truth is coming out. He only cared about his own safety." Because of course, as you remember, as they were describing, and as Cassidy Hutchinson was describing, the fact that the president not only lunged at the neck of a Secret Service agent, but also lunged at the steering wheel of that vehicle that he was in, he was saying, "I'm not at risk. They're not going to hurt me," even though they had AR-15s and military backpacks and all sorts of other equipment. That was making the Secret Service very, very nervous. We should also point out that violence had already broken out at the Capitol. While all of this is happening, that is going on. And when I'm talking to the people that were closest to President Trump, some aides again, who were on his campaign, they say that it really hurts to think about the fact that here was the President of the United States only thinking about his own safety, only thinking about whether or not he would be hurt. The committee really did set the stakes really, really high here, and based on the reactions that I'm getting from people, a lot of them Trump supporters, they really are meeting the bar here for a history-making session. All eyes were on this young woman, and she, of course, is part of the Republican establishment. Even though she's young, she worked for Steve Scalise, she was in the legislative affairs. So many people know who she is, know that she really did have a lot of values that were really connected to the Republican Party. So to see her really sit here and look sad in some ways, look really petrified in other ways, but also look stoic when she is sitting here quoting directly what she heard from the president, or what she heard people say the president did, I also think it's really important that there was that scene at the end where President Trump is throwing plates, where he's throwing his lunch against the wall. It is another instance where he is again having to confront the fact that his election lies are just that, they are lies. There were no fraudulent in the 2020 election, and here was his Attorney General, Bill Barr, trying to explain that to him. And there are a lot of people in Trump world who say, "This is another sort of key part here," where people feeling like they were useful idiots, because they really do feel like former President Trump was only worried about himself, drunk off of power, wanting to stay in office no matter what it took, including, of course, physically attacking a Secret Service agent, which I think, Lester, is still so remarkable, and it's going to take a lot of time for people to process just how far former President Trump was willing to go.
And Yamiche, I'm going to ask you a question. It may not matter as much as it did an hour ago, but based on what we've seen, these stories would have been as shocking two weeks from now, three weeks from now, four weeks from now. Are we closer to getting an understanding of why they wanted this out now, so off the schedule they had laid out?
It's a great question, Lester. In talking to folks, it feels, at least in talking to folks, I get the sense that Cassidy Hutchinson, that her security and her sort of, where she, how she felt about this information being out in the ether, and what her life might be like now that she's spoken out with her name, with her face out there publicly, that the lawmakers wanted to make sure that she had this opportunity, and then that she could finally maybe go to some safe location. Of course, that is all, at this point, not clear. It's unclear whether or not that's exactly what the lawmakers were thinking, but my sense in talking to sources are that they were really, really concerned about her safety, and they also felt like this was urgent information. Let's remember that this is a committee that is on a timetable, right? There is this sort of midterm elections all the way in the fall, in November, and lawmakers want enough time as possible for the public to really digest what are, as you described them, explosive details on the actions of former President Trump.
All right, the witness walking back in along with members of the committee. Let me get Chuck Todd in here very quickly. Chuck, a lot of this has been about, are we going to hear the magic words of what the president knew, his acknowledgement of doing things wrong? Are they close, or hasn't happened yet?
I think they're closer, and as I had one very close Trump supporter say to me, everything she's testified to cuts across the public defense I've been making of him, which is that it was just a speech. It's no longer just a speech now on that ellipse.
All right, Chuck Todd, we are waiting now for this session to resume. We don't know where they're going to take it right now, but of course, what we've heard so far has, will fill conversations for many hours. There's the gavel. Let's go back into the room.
The committee will be in order. Chair recognizes a John Warren from Wyoming. Vice Chair Cheney.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before we turn to what Ms. Hutchinson saw and heard in the White House during the violent attack on the Capitol on January 6th, let's discuss certain communications White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows had on January 5th. President Trump's associate, Roger Stone, attended rallies during the afternoon and the evening of January 5th in Washington, DC. On January 5th and 6th, Mr. Stone was photographed with multiple members of the Oath Keepers, who were allegedly serving as his security detail. As we now know, multiple members of that organization have been charged with or pled guilty to crimes associated with January 6th. Mr. Stone has invoked his Fifth Amendment privilege against self-incrimination before this committee. General Michael Flynn has also taken the Fifth before this committee. Mr. Stone previously had been convicted of other federal crimes unrelated to January 6th. General Flynn had pleaded guilty to a felony charge also predating and unrelated to January 6th. President Trump pardoned General Flynn just weeks after the presidential election, and in July of 2020, he commuted the sentence Roger Stone was to serve. The night before January 6th, President Trump instructed his Chief of Staff, Mark Meadows, to contact both Roger Stone and Michael Flynn regarding what would play out the next day. Ms. Hutchinson, is it your understanding that President Trump asked Mark Meadows to speak with Roger Stone and General Flynn on January 5th?
That's correct. That is my understanding.
And Ms. Hutchinson, is it your understanding that Mr. Meadows called Mr. Stone on the 5th?
I'm under the impression that Mr. Meadows did complete both a call to Mr. Stone and General Flynn the evening of the 5th.
And do you know what they talked about that evening, Ms. Hutchinson?
I'm not sure.
Is it your understanding that Mr. Giuliani, Mr. Eastman, and others had set up what has been called, quote, "A war room" at the Willard Hotel on the night of the 5th?
I was aware of that the night of the 5th.
And do you know if Mr. Meadows ever intended to go to the Willard Hotel on the night of the 5th?
Mr. Meadows had a conversation with me where he wanted me to work with Secret Service on a movement from the White House to the Willard Hotel, so he could attend the meeting or meetings with Mr. Giuliani and his associates in the war room.
And what was your view as to whether or not Mr. Meadows should go to the Willard that night?
I had made it clear to Mr. Meadows that I didn't believe it was a smart idea for him to go to the Willard Hotel that night. I wasn't sure everything that was going on at the Willard Hotel, although I knew enough about what Mr. Giuliani and his associates were pushing during this period. I didn't think that it was something appropriate for the White House Chief of Staff to attend or to consider involvement in. I made that clear to Mr. Meadows. Throughout the afternoon, he mentioned a few more times going up to the Willard Hotel that evening, and then eventually dropped the subject the night of the 5th, and said that he would dial in instead.
So General Flynn has appeared before this committee, and when he appeared before our committee, he took the Fifth. Let's briefly view a clip of General Mike Flynn taking the Fifth Amendment. General Flynn, do you believe the violence on January 6th was justified?
Can we have?
Yes.
All right, open back. Vice Chair, could you repeat the question, please?
Yes. General Flynn, do you believe the violence on January 6th was justified?
Is that, can I get clarification? Is that a moral question, or are you asking a complete question?
I'm asking both. I'm asking both.
I said, I said, "The Fifth."
Do you believe the violence on January 6th was justified morally?
Take the Fifth.
You believe the violence on January 6th was justified legally?
Fifth.
General Flynn, do you believe in the peaceful transition of power in the United States of America?
The Fifth.
Let's move on now to January 6th and the conduct of Donald Trump and Mark Meadows during the attack on the Capitol. Ms. Hutchinson, I'd like now for us to listen to a description, your description of what transpired in the West Wing during the attack. For context, in this clip, you described the timeframe starting at about 2:00 PM.
So I remember Mark being alone in his office for quite some time. And, you know, I know we've spoken about Ben Williamson going in at one point. And I don't personally remember Ben going in. I don't doubt that he had gone in. But I remember him being alone in his office for most of the afternoon, around 2:00 to 2:05. Around 2:00 to 2:05, you know, we were watching the TV, and I could see that the rioters were getting closer and closer to the Capitol. Mark still hadn't popped out of his office or said anything about it. So that's when I went into his office. I saw that he was sitting on his couch, on his cellphone, same as the morning where he was just kind of scrolling and typing. I said, "Hey, are you watching the TV, Chief?" Because his TV was small, and you can see it, but I didn't know if he was really paying attention. I said, "Are you watching the TV, Chief?" And he was like, "Yeah." The rioters are getting really close. Have you talked to the president? And he said, "No, he wants to be alone right now, still looking at his phone." So I started to get frustrated, because I sort of felt like I was watching a, this is not a great comparison, but a bad car accident that was about to happen, where you can't stop it, but you want to be able to do something. And I just remember, I remember thinking in that moment, "Mark needs to snap out of this, and I don't know how to snap him out of this, but he needs to care." And I just remember I blurted out, I said, "Mark, do you know where Jim's at right now?" And he looked up at me at that point and said, "Jim?" And I said, "Mark is, he was on the floor a little while ago giving a floor speech. Did you listen?" He said, "Yeah, it was real good. Did you like it?" And I said, "Yeah." "Do you know where he's at right now?" He said, "No, I haven't heard from him." And I said, "You might want to check in with him, Mark." And I remember pointing at the TV and I said, "The rioters are getting close. They might get in." And he looked at me and said something to the effect of, "All right, I'll give him a call."
Not long after the rioters broke into the Capitol, you described what happened with White House Counsel Pat Cipollone.
No more than a minute, minute and a half later, I see Pat Cipollone barreling down the hallway towards our office, and rushed right in, looked at me, said, "Is Mark in his office?" And I said, "Yes." He just looked at me and started shaking his head, and went over, opened Mark's office door, stood there with the door propped open, and said something to the, "Mark is still sitting on his phone." I remember like glancing, and he's still sitting on his phone. And I remember Pat saying to him something to the effect of, "The rioters have gotten to the Capitol, Mark. We need to go down and see the president now." And Mark looked up at him and said, "He doesn't want to do anything, Pat." And Pat said something to the effect of, and very clearly had said this to Mark, something to the effect of, "Mark, something needs to be done, or people are going to die, and the blood's going to be on your effing hands. This is getting out of control. I'm going down there." And at that point, Mark stood up from his couch, both of his phones in his hand, he had his glasses on still. He walked out with Pat. He put both of his phones on my desk and said, "Let me know if Jim calls." And they walked out, went down to the dining room.
A few minutes later, Representative Jordan called back.
A couple minutes later, so likely around between 2:15 and 2:25. I know the tweet went out at 2:24. I don't remember if I was there when the tweet went out, or if it happened right afterwards. But Jim had called. I answered the phone, said, "One second." He knew it was, I guess he knew it was me. I introduced myself, but I don't remember if he called my cellphone, or if he had called one of Mark's. But I answered the phone and said, "One sec, Mark. So I'm going to go hand the phone to him." He said, "Okay." So I went down. I asked the valet if Mark was in the dining room. The valet said, "Yes." I opened the door to the dining room, briefly stepped in to get Mark's attention, showed him the phone, like flipped the phone his way so he could see it, said, "Jim Jordan." He had stepped to where I was standing there, holding the door open, took the phone, talking to Jim, with the door still propped open. So I took a few steps back. So I probably was two feet from Mark. He was standing in the doorway going to the Oval Office dining room. They had a brief conversation. And in the crossfires, you know, I heard briefly like what they were talking about. But in the background, I had heard conversations in the Oval Dining Room at that point, talking about the "Hang Mike Pence" chants.
That clip ended, Ms. Hutchinson, with you recalling that you heard the president, Mr. Meadows, and the White House Counsel discussing the "Hang Mike Pence" chants. And then you described for us what happened next.
It wasn't until Mark hung up the phone, handed it back to me. I went back to my desk. A couple minutes later, him and Pat came back, possibly Eric Hirschman too. I'm pretty sure Eric Hirschman was there. But I'm confident it was Pat that was there. I remember Pat saying something to the effect of, "Mark, we need to do something more. They're literally calling for the vice president to be effing hung." And Mark had responded something to the effect of, "You heard him, Pat. He thinks Mike deserves it. He doesn't think they're doing anything wrong." To which Pat said something, "This is effing crazy. We need to be doing something more." Briefly stepped into Mark's office. And when Mark had said something, when Mark had said something to the effect of, "He doesn't think they're doing anything wrong," knowing what I had heard briefly in the dining room, coupled with Pat discussing the "Hang Mike Pence" chants in the lobby of our office, and then Mark's response, I understood there to be the rioters in the Capitol that were chanting for the vice president to be hung.
Let me pause here on this point. As rioters chanted "Hang Mike Pence," the President of the United States, Donald Trump, said that, quote, "Mike deserves it," and that those rioters were not doing anything wrong. This is a sentiment that he has expressed at other times as well. In an interview with ABC News correspondent Jonathan Karl, President Trump was asked about the supporters chanting "Hang Mike Pence" last year. Instead of condemning them, the former president defended them.
Saying "Hang Mike Pence."
Because it's common sense, John, it's common sense that you're supposed to protect. How can you, if you know a vote is fraudulent, right? How can you pass on a fraudulent vote to Congress?
President Trump's view that the rioters were not doing anything wrong, and that, quote, "Mike deserved it," helps us to understand why the president did not ask the rioters to leave the Capitol for multiple hours. In fact, he put this tweet out at 2:24 PM. Ms. Hutchinson, do you recall seeing this tweet in which the president said the vice president did not have the courage to do what needed to be done?
I do.
And Ms. Hutchinson, what was your reaction when you saw this tweet?
As a staffer that works to always represent the administration to the best of my ability, and to showcase the good things that he had done for the country, I remember feeling frustrated, disappointed, and really, it felt personal. It was really sad. As an American, I was disgusted. It was unpatriotic. It was un-American. We were watching the Capitol Building get defaced over a lie. And it was something that was really hard in that moment to digest, knowing what I had been hearing down the hall, and the conversations that were happening. Seeing that tweet come up, and knowing what was happening on the Hill, and it's something that I, it's still, I still struggle to work through the emotions of that.
Ms. Hutchinson, we have also spoken to multiple other White House staff about their reaction to Donald Trump's 2:24 tweet condemning Mike Pence for not having the courage to refuse to count electoral votes, an act that would have been illegal. Matthew Pottinger, a former Marine intelligence officer who served in the White House for four years, including as Deputy National Security Advisor, was in the vicinity of the Oval Office at various points throughout the day. When he saw that tweet, he immediately decided to resign his position. Let's watch him describe his reaction to the president's tweet.
One of my staff brought me a printout of a tweet by the president. And the tweet said something to the effect that Mike Pence, the vice president, didn't have the courage to do what he, what should have been done. I read that tweet and made a decision at that moment to resign. That's where I knew that I was leaving that day, once I read that tweet.
Ultimately, members of the White House staff, Sarah Matthews, cabinet members, Secretary Chow, and Secretary DeVos resigned as well. Here is Secretary DeVos's resignation letter. As you can see, in resigning on January 6th, Secretary DeVos said to the president, quote, "There's no mistaking the impact your rhetoric had on the situation, and it is the inflection point for me." Let's also look at Secretary Chow's resignation statement. When Secretary Chow resigned, she spoke of the January 6th attack. And she said, quote, "As I am sure is the case with many of you, this has deeply troubled me in a way I simply cannot set aside." Ms. Hutchinson, in our prior interviews, we've asked you about what the president's advisers were urging him to do during the attack. You've described roughly three different camps of thought inside the White House that day. Can you tell us about those?
There is a group of individuals that were strongly urging him to take immediate and swift action. I would classify the White House Counsel's office, Mr. Hirschman, Ms. Ivanka Trump, in that category of really working to get him to take action and pleading with him to take action. There is a more neutral group where advisers were trying to toe the line, knowing that Mr. Trump didn't necessarily want to take immediate action and condemn the riots, but knowing something needed to be done. And then there was the last group, which was deflect and blame. Let's blame Antifa. These aren't our people. It's my understanding that Mr. Meadows was in the deflect and blame category, but he did end up taking a more neutral route, knowing that there were several advisers in the president's circle urging him to take more action, which I think was reflected in the rhetoric released later that day in the videos.
You told us that the White House Counsel's office was in the camp encouraging the president to tell the rioters to stop the attack and to leave the Capitol. Let's listen.
White House Counsel's office wanted there to be a strong statement out to condemn the rioters. I'm confident in that.
Now, let's look at just one example of what some senior advisers to the president were urging. Ms. Hutchinson, could you look at the exhibit that we're showing on the screen now? Have you seen this note before?
That's a note that I wrote at the direction of the Chief of Staff on January 6th, likely around 3:00.
And it's written on a Chief of Staff note card, but that's your handwriting, Ms. Hutchinson?
That's my handwriting.
And why did you write this note?
The Chief of Staff was in a meeting with Eric Hirschman, potentially Mr. Philbin, and they had rushed out of the office fairly quickly. Mark had handed me the note card with one of his pens, and started dictating a statement for the president to potentially put out.
And, no, I'm sorry, go ahead.
That's okay. There are two phrases on there, one "illegal," and then one "without proper authority." The "illegal" phrase was the one that Mr. Meadows had dictated to me. Mr. Hirschman had chimed in and said, "Also put without legal authority." There should have been a slash between the two phrases. It was an "or." If the president had opted to put one of those statements out, evidently he didn't. Later that afternoon, Mark came back from the Oval Dining Room and put the palm card on my desk with illegally crossed out, but said, "We didn't need to take further action on that statement."
So, to your knowledge, this statement was never issued?
It was, to my knowledge, it was never issued.
And Ms. Hutchinson, did you understand that Ivanka Trump wanted her father to send people home?
That's my understanding, yes.
Let's play a clip of you addressing that issue.
I remember her saying at various points, you know, she wants him, she wanted her dad to send them home. She wanted her dad to tell them to go home peacefully. And she wanted to include language that he necessarily wasn't on board with at the time.
You will hear more about this at our later hearings, but we have evidence of many others imploring Donald Trump and Mark Meadows to take action. Here is some of that evidence, text messages sent to Mark Meadows during the attack. This is a text message at 2:32 from Laura Ingraham. "Hey, Mark, the president needs to tell people in the Capitol to go home." In the next message, "This is hurting all of us." And then, "He's destroying his legacy and playing into every stereotype. We lose all credibility against the BLM-Antifa crowd if things go south." The president's son, Don Jr., also urgently contacted Mark Meadows. At 2:53, he wrote, "He's got to condemn this shit ASAP. The Capitol Police tweet is not enough." As you will see, these are just two of the numerous examples of Trump supporters and allies urging the president to tell his supporters to leave the Capitol. It would not have been hard for the president to simply walk down to the briefing room, a few feet down the hall from the Oval Office, as Nora O'Donnell noted during an interview with House Republican Leader Kevin McCarthy, where Leader McCarthy said he believed the attack was un-American.
I want to quickly bring in Kevin McCarthy, the House Minority Leader. Leader McCarthy, do you condemn this violence?
I completely condemn the violence in the Capitol. What we're currently watching unfold is un-American. I am disappointed. I'm sad. This is not what our country should look like. This is not who we are. This is not the First Amendment. This has to stop, and this has to stop now.
Leader McCarthy, the President of the United States has a briefing room steps from the Oval Office. It is, the cameras are hot 24/7, as you know. Why hasn't he walked down and said that now?
I conveyed to the president what I think is best to do, and I'm hopeful the president will do it.
Republican House member Mike Gallagher also implored the president to call off the attack.
Mr. President, you have got to stop this. You are the only person who can call this off. Call it off. The election is over. Call it off. This is bigger than you. It's bigger than any member of Congress. It is about the United States of America, which is more important than any politician. Call it off. It's over.
Despite the fact that many people close to Donald Trump were urging him to send people home, he did not do so until later, much later. At 4:17 PM, Donald Trump finally told the rioters to go home, and that he loved them. Here's a portion of the video President Trump recorded from the White House. At 4:17 PM, Donald Trump finally told the rioters to go home and that he loved them. Here's a portion of the video President Trump recorded from the White House.
We have to have peace. So, go home. We love you. You're very special. You've seen what happens. You see the way others are treated that are so bad and so evil. I know how you feel, but go home and go home in peace.
But as we will show in even greater detail in future hearings, Donald Trump was reluctant to put this message out, and he still could not bring himself to condemn the attack. Ms. Hutchinson has told us that, too. The one that he put out at 4:17?
I'm sure you've discussed it, and just to elaborate if I hadn't already at that point, I recall him being reluctant to film the video on the 6th. I was not involved in any of the logistics or the planning for that video. I just remember seeing the video go out and feeling a little shocked after it went out.
On the evening of January 6th and the day after, the President's family and his senior staff and others tried to encourage the President to condemn the violence and commit to the peaceful transition of power. At 3:31 PM on January 6th, Sean Hannity of Fox News texted Mark Meadows. Mr. Hannity said, quote, "Can he make a statement? I saw the tweet. Ask people to leave the Capitol." Later that evening, Mr. Hannity sent another text message to Mark Meadows. This time, he shared a link to a tweet. That tweet reported that President Trump's Cabinet Secretaries were considering invoking the 25th Amendment to remove President Trump from office. As you can see on the screen, the 25th Amendment to the Constitution creates a process for the transition of power if a President is unfit or unable to serve. 25th Amendment has never been used to remove a President. But the committee has learned that after the attack on the U.S. Capitol, this was being discussed by members of President Trump's Cabinet as a way of stripping the full power of the presidency from Donald Trump. President Trump's supporters were worried. In addition to the tweet that he sent Mark Meadows after the attack, Sean Hannity apparently spoke with President Trump and warned him about what could happen. We understand that this text message that Sean Hannity sent to Kayleigh McEnany on January 7th shows what Mr. Hannity said to the President. First, no more stolen election talk. Second, impeachment and 25th Amendment are real. Many people will quit. Ms. Hutchinson, you told us that you were hearing about discussions related to the 25th Amendment. Here's part of what you said.
Mr. Pompeo, I reached out to have the conversation with Mr. Meadows in case he hadn't heard the discussions amongst Cabinet Secretaries. And from what I understand, it was more of a, this is what I'm hearing. I want you to be aware of it, but I also think it's worth putting on your radar because you are the Chief of Staff. You're technically the boss of all the Cabinet Secretaries. And, you know, if conversations progress, you should be ready to take action on this. Like, I'm concerned for you and your positioning with this. You know, reach out to me if you have any questions, or like, I could be helpful with you at all.
Inside the White House, the President's advisors, including members of his family, wanted him to deliver a speech to the country. Deputy White House Counsel Pat Philbin prepared the first draft of what would be the President's remarks on national healing, delivered via pre-taped video on January 7th. When he arrived at the White House on the 7th, Mr. Philbin believed that more needed to be said, so he sat down and started writing. He shared the draft with Pat Cipollone, who also believed the President needed to say more. Mr. Cipollone agreed with the content, as did Eric Hirschman, who reviewed the draft. The committee has learned that the President did not agree with the substance as drafted and resisted giving a speech at all. Ms. Hutchinson, do you recall discussions about the President's speech on January 7th?
I do.
Let's listen, Ms. Hutchinson, to what you told us about that and about the process of crafting those remarks.
I learned from a conversation with Mark and overhearing between him and White House Counsel and Eric Hirschman as well, that Trump didn't necessarily think he needed to do anything more on the 7th than what he had already done on the 6th. When he was convinced to put out a video on the 7th, I understand that he had a lot of opinions about what the context of that announcement were to until, I had original drafts of the speech where, you know, there were several lines that didn't make it in there about prosecuting the rioters or calling them violent. He didn't want that in there. He wanted to put in there that he wanted to potentially pardon them. And this is just with the increased emphasis of his mindset at the time, which was, he didn't think that they did anything wrong. The people who did something wrong that day, or the person who did something wrong that day was Mike Pence by not standing with him.
But the President's advisors urged him to give the speech.
Who convinced him to do the video on the 7th?
I'm not sure who convinced him, or if it was a group of people that convinced him.
Who was in the group that you're aware of?
That I'm aware of, Mark, Ivanka, Jared Kushner, Eric Hirschman, Pat Cipollone, Pat Philbin. Those are the people that I'm aware of.
Do you know why that group of people thought it was necessary for him to release a statement?
I believe Kayleigh McEnany as well. From what I understood at the time and from what the reports were coming in, there is a large concern of the 25th Amendment potentially being invoked, and there were concerns about what would happen in the Senate if it was, if the 25th was invoked. So, the primary reason that I had heard, other than, you know, we did not do enough on the 6th, we need to get a stronger message out there and condemn this, otherwise this will be your legacy. The secondary reason to that was, you know, think about what might happen in the final 15 days of your presidency if we don't do this. There's already talks about invoking the 25th Amendment. You need this as cover.
The President ultimately delivered the remarks. Unlike many of his other speeches, he did not ad lib much. He recited them without significant alteration, except one. Even then, on January 7th, 2021, the day after the attack on the U.S. Capitol, the President still could not bring himself to say, quote, "But this election is now over." One other point about the speech, Ms. Hutchinson, did you hear that Mr. Trump at one point wanted to add language about pardoning those who took part in the January 6th riot?
I did hear that, and I understand that Mr. Meadows was encouraging that language as well.
Thank you. And here's what you told us previously about that.
You said he was instructed not to include it. Who was instructing him not to include language about the pardon in that January 7th?
I understood from White House Counsel's Office coming into our office that morning that they didn't think that it was a good idea to include that in the speech.
That being Pat Cipollone?
That's correct. And Eric Hirschman?
Ms. Hutchinson, did Rudy Giuliani ever suggest that he was interested in receiving a presidential pardon related to January 6th?
He did.
And Ms. Hutchinson, did White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows ever indicate that he was interested in receiving a presidential pardon related to January 6th?
Mr. Meadows did seek that pardon, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Ms. Hutchinson. Mr. Chairman, I yield back.
I want to thank our witness for joining us today. The members of the Select Committee may have additional questions for today's witness, and we ask that you respond expeditiously in writing to those questions. Without objections, members will be permitted 10 business days to submit statements for the record, including opening remarks and additional questions for the witness. Without objection, the Chair recognizes the Vice Chair for a closing statement.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I want to begin by thanking Ms. Hutchinson for her testimony today. We are all in her debt. Our nation is preserved by those who abide by their oaths to our Constitution. Our nation is preserved by those who know the fundamental difference between right and wrong. And I want all Americans to know that what Ms. Hutchinson has done today is not easy. The easy course is to hide from the spotlight, to refuse to come forward, to attempt to downplay or deny what happened. That brings me to a different topic. While our committee has seen many witnesses, including many Republicans, testify fully and forthrightly, this has not been true of every witness. And we have received evidence of one particular practice that raises significant concern. Our committee commonly asks witnesses connected to Mr. Trump's administration or campaign whether they've been contacted by any of their former colleagues or anyone else who attempted to influence or impact their testimony. Without identifying any of the individuals involved, let me show you a couple of samples of answers we received to this question. First, here's how one witness described phone calls from people interested in that witness's testimony. Quote, "What they said to me is as long as I continue to be a team player, they know I'm on the right team. I'm doing the right thing. I'm protecting who I need to protect. You know I'll continue to stay in good graces in Trump world." And they have reminded me a couple of times that Trump does read transcripts, and just keep that in mind as I proceed through my interviews with the committee. Here's another sample in a different context. This is a call received by one of our witnesses. Quote, "A person let me know you have your deposition tomorrow. He wants me to let you know he's thinking about you. He knows you're loyal, and you're going to do the right thing when you go in for your deposition." I think most Americans know that attempting to influence witnesses to testify untruthfully presents very serious concerns. We will be discussing these issues as a committee, carefully considering our next steps. Mr. Chairman, thank you. I yield back.
Young woman yields back. Ms. Hutchinson, thank you. Thank you for doing your patriotic duty and helping the American people get a complete understanding of January 6th and its causes. Thank you for your courage in testifying here today. You have the gratitude of this committee and your country. I know it wasn't easy to sit here today and answer these questions, but after hearing your testimony in all its candor and detail, I want to speak directly to the handful of witnesses who have been outliers in our investigation, the small number who have defied us outright, those whose memories have failed them again and again on the most important details, and to those who fear Donald Trump and his enablers because of this courageous woman and others like her, your attempt to hide the truth from the American people will fail. And to that group of witnesses, if you've heard this testimony today and suddenly you remember things you couldn't previously recall, or there are some details you'd like to clarify, or you discovered some courage you had hidden away somewhere, our doors remain open. The Select Committee will reconvene in the weeks ahead as we continue to lay out our findings to the American people. The Chair requests those in the hearing room to remain seated until the Capitol Police have escorted the witness and members from the room. Without objection, the committee stands adjourned.
Cassidy Hutchinson now about to leave the room as the cameras click. It has been frankly, an incredible journey today, from shocking to sinister, ending with that suggestion of those who may be trying to influence the testimony of witnesses, people with perhaps vested interests in the outcome of this hearing. But this is a name that most people didn't know. A lot of people will know after some of the shocking testimony that she offered today. The January 6th Committee bringing to a close a hearing that had some of the most explosive allegations we've heard so far. The second part of today is focusing on President Trump's reaction to the rioters breaching the Capitol. According to 25-year-old former White House aide Cassidy Hutchinson, Mr. Trump said of the "hang Mike Pence chants" that maybe Mike deserved it. She also described a President resistant to take action to get the rioters to stand down. Earlier, Hutchinson testified that President Trump knew the rioters had weapons, but still encouraged them to march on the Capitol. According to her, the former President felt so strongly he needed to go with the rallygoers that he forcibly tried to grab the steering wheel from the Secret Service agent driving him and lunged at a member of his security detail. Let's bring in again Chuck Todd, NBC's political director and moderator of Meet the Press. Chuck, I recall after the last hearing, you said that might be the most significant. I assume this goes to the top of the heap.
Look, this lived up to the hype of what I had been told about this witness. This is, if you want to make the John Dean comparisons, that was former President Richard Nixon's White House Counsel who testified publicly, and it really broke open that investigation. This feels that compelling. We're going to find out if it does open the floodgates to more to talk, whether it's Pat Cipollone, the White House Counsel, whether it is the Chief of Staff, Mark Meadows, who has been fighting this and could be held criminally liable for not participating in this. Boy, I'll tell you, the only person that had a worse day than Donald Trump was probably Mark Meadows. I mean, he really was painted as a very ineffectual person, a bit of a flunky to the President, a true believer who either was paralyzed or by what was happening in the moment, torn between his loyalty to the President and perhaps what he was watching for whatever reason, but his inaction is pretty damning at the end of this. But look, this is, here's to me the question I would ask so many Republican senators now, knowing then what you know now about the President's actions, how would you have voted at the impeachment trial? Or to the Cabinet Secretaries, it was Mike Pence who apparently called off the 25th Amendment talk. Again, if you knew the President attacked a Secret Service agent, if you knew the President, all of his actions that he was unwilling to take, if you knew the Chief of Staff had asked for a pardon in advance, how would you have voted? How would you have conducted yourself? This is, look, she, I think, broke open and put to rest any of the bizarre spin people have tried to put on this to defend the President, stuff getting out of hand, they didn't know, et cetera, et cetera. To me, we'll know the effectiveness of this testimony in a couple of weeks by how many new witnesses come forward, but I got to think, she's going to open the floodgates now.
Yeah, let me turn to Peter Alexander. Peter, you've spent so much time in the White House, you could understand these descriptions of proximity and where the Oval Office was and where the Chief of Staff was. So, you're seeing a picture many of us really don't have. Try to take us into the moment and what stood out to you.
Well, what stood out to me, first of all, is that you have a 25-year-old who's standing in front of the planet communicating this message about Donald Trump, covering his presidency from day one. You and I both remember how many times he would dismiss some reporting we had that was described as a source familiar with the matter, or a White House official, he said these are all made-up sources. Now, you have a source on the record testifying before the world saying, "This is what I witnessed. This is what I heard. This is what I saw." And what's striking to me as we have this conversation is, as long as it took President Trump to respond to the riot on the Capitol that day, 187 minutes before his first tweet, it didn't take him nearly that long to respond to Cassidy Hutchinson. On his social media site, the President has tweeted now multiple times, not surprisingly, attacking Ms. Hutchinson, saying that "I hardly know who this person, Cassidy Hutchinson, is." He calls her a phony and a leaker. He says that she tried to get a job at Mar-a-Lago after his term was up. As for the story about him trying to grab the steering wheel, he describes that as fake, says it was sick and fraudulent, like, in his words, "The unselect committee here." But the President doesn't lash out, as we know, unless he's furious about something. He's clearly furious about this. And what I'm also hearing is from some of those who also worked in that White House. Sarah Matthews today, it's a name that may be familiar. She was one of the deputy press secretaries. She was there on January 6th. She's another individual who resigned on that day because she said she simply couldn't handle what she had seen. She stood up for her friend Cassidy Hutchinson as a woman of courage and a woman of honesty, and she said to all of those in my old world, in the MAGA world, who complain that this is hearsay, "I'm sure the committee would like to hear from you like they heard from her under oath." I agree with Chuck. The question is, will other individuals come forward now, now that she has? The question is, will other individuals come forward now, now that she has communicated their story, if they won't do it on their own behalf?
She certainly names enough names that surely someone could either corroborate or refute what she had to say on a direct basis. Danny, let me ask you, so we get past the 6th to the 7th, this question about whether the President should do a speech, his insiders saying, yes, you have to do it. The 25th Amendment seems to be the carrot in this case, or the potential stick.
It does, but the 25th Amendment has so many failsafes, so many opportunities for it not to be implemented, that it is very, very difficult to get the 25th Amendment to use it to effectively remove or temporarily remove a President. So while that may have been discussed as an option, the point I'm trying to make is to get the 25th Amendment, to use it to temporarily remove a President, requires so much agreement among the Cabinet with the Vice President, that this was even a discussion means they had at least a headcount. I mean, it is so easy to short circuit that 25th Amendment procedure, that to even get to a conversation about could we do this means you already had enough people who are really thinking about it. That's how difficult it is to use that 25th Amendment. That's why it's really never come up, at least in its pure form. It's been sort of invoked for medical procedures and otherwise, but not like this, never like this.
Let me go to Ali Vitale, who's outside the hearing room right now. Ali, of course, there's been so many moments in this, in this hearing, and at times I found myself wondering what is reaction like? What are they doing right now in the chambers? Perhaps you can offer that color.
Yeah, Lester, I think that this entire building is wrapped by these hearings, not just inside the hearing room, where, as I mentioned earlier, this one really felt different, the gravity of the situation, the way that no one who was in that hearing room wanted to take their eyes off the screen or their ears off of what they were being told because they were afraid that they would miss something. And certainly, every sentence packed a new punch in terms of telling us something that we didn't know before. You see Chairman Thompson there speaking at the microphones, and I think he did something today that really struck me, which is, he spoke at the end of this hearing, the way that he talks to me and others here in the hall, with that edge in his voice, almost daring people. If you've already talked to us and you might have forgotten something, or if you've, if you've gained some courage watching a former colleague of yours testify about what was going on in the White House, their doors are still open. I think it speaks to the larger flexibility that this committee has shown that it has, willing to throw out their plans in order to put this kind of testimony spontaneously into the record and into the public view. It really does show that this two-pronged track that they've been working on, laying out the public narrative while also still fact-finding, is so palpable here. And I think that in regards to what Peter said, the way that the former President and others are trying to perhaps distance themselves from even knowing who Cassidy Hutchinson is, the committee worked in painstaking detail, not just to establish her physical proximity, where she was sitting in the Oval Office and the kinds of things that she had access to, but also her professional career, the way that she had worked for people who are top Republican leaders even still right now in Congress, key conservatives, the fact that the number one Republican would call her on this day, Congressman McCarthy, all of that, speaking to her credibility here. And you saw it as the committee left, thanking her on their way out the door and urging others to come forward.
Before I let you go, have you heard anything about this suggestion that came out at the end of the hearing, that some of these witnesses may be receiving calls and suggestions to not be as forthcoming as, as perhaps they should be?
It's not necessarily surprising, though. If you consider the way that others have testified in the aftermath of the election, how they were pressured, how there were all of these double meanings and the things that they were told from Trump and his allies, this is sort of the way that Trump world has always worked. There is a loyalty test, and we know that it only goes one way, but Peter and I have covered this orbit for years now, over half a decade, and it's in no way surprising to hear that especially lower-level aides, who you have to remember, may not have the money to mount the legal challenges that are protracted and frankly, very costly, they may not have the money to do that. So they are forced in many ways to cooperate here. And you heard some of the aides even who were on record today talking, not in a way that seemed like they wanted to be helpful, I'm thinking specifically of Max Miller, for example, who's actually on the ballot in Ohio for his own race for the House. He got Trump's endorsement, he remains close in this orbit, but nevertheless, you're seeing him comply with the subpoena that was sent to him. That speaks to some of the younger people in this orbit, and it makes sense that people in Trump's upper echelons are still watching. I think for many of us who have covered this world for a long time, none of that is necessarily surprising, and certainly, it's a parallel to what several of the election officials and others who have testified during the course of this hearing have also gamed out in the public eye.
Ali Vitale, thank you for your coverage. Let me go to Washington correspondent, Yamiche Alcindor. Yamiche, what do we do with all this? I mean, we've got, there's a ton, obviously, of headlines that people will be talking about, the President trying to take over the beast, driving the beast, throwing a plate of food against a wall in a White House dining room. But what are we to take away here?
Well, Democratic lawmakers want people to take away the fact that they believe Republicans are spreading dangerous lies and that this lie about the election continues into our politics today. Let's remember that there are a number of election deniers who have now been elected or who have won primaries across the country, people who continue to spread that the 2020 election was fraudulent. And there are people, including a number of them, that are now almost hinting at the fact that 2024 might have to be overturned if the Republican nominee does not win. We heard that from Judge Ludek, who was that conservative judge who really had a warning for the country, saying that our democracy is on the line. And Lester, we have to point out that Cassidy Hutchinson might prove to be the most or one of the most important witnesses that we've heard to date. And I say that because I've not only been hearing that from Trump aides and former Trump aides and Democrats and Republicans, but also because of the reaction of former President Trump. He has not been live tweeting, live messaging these hearings on his own Truth Social, his social media site. But when it came to Cassidy Hutchinson, we saw the anger boil over, and he was going after her message after message. That tells me that the former President is paying attention, that he believes that these damning details, these damning accusations, that he tried to physically assault a Secret Service agent, that he was grabbing the wheel, that he was celebrating and believing that Mike Pence should be hung, that he wanted to pardon the rioters, all of these different things that she was saying, that they could possibly hurt him. Of course, it's, it's not clear whether or not he will be politically hurt by this. We know that his grip on the Republican Party remains strong, and that there are a number of people, establishment Republicans, who continue to go to Mar-a-Lago, who continue to seek his endorsement. But it is to me very striking that the former President, with all his power, that he is going after this 25-year-old woman. I also think we have to really think about, sort of, if we pull this back, this was yet another curtain removed from the White House, when we think about sort of what was happening, what was being said. That January 7 speech in particular is really interesting to me, because what we heard was former President Trump not just wanting to say that the rioters did nothing wrong, the only person he believes did something wrong was former Vice President Mike Pence. That tells you where his, where his mind was on January 7, and that also tells you where his mind is here and now. So to go back to your original question, the danger, the lies, they continue. So what we are to do with this is to really continue to cover them, to continue to really point out that all the things that President Trump was saying on January 7, he's continuing to say them, and that the chorus of people who are saying them, it's just growing. While Cassidy Hutchinson was talking about a lot of people resigning from the White House and people wanting to distance themselves from President Trump, a lot of those people have now done a 180, and the Republican Party now is very much online and on board with former President Trump.
All right, Yamiche, thanks very much. Let me go back to Chuck Todd. Chuck, I'll put the same question to you. We've got a lot here that we've taken in today. The country traditionally now is kind of taking a break as we head into the July 4th holiday. Does this linger in the air? Does this stay in our consciousness?
I think it does. I think the allegations are too, you know, look, you know, sometimes with these hearings, you need something that's a bit of a shiny metal object. And I say this with not, not trying to dismiss this anecdote, but the attack of the Secret Service agent, that grabs your attention, that grabs the average person's attention. But let's not forget what happened at the very end of the hearing. We have a new crime being alleged at the President and the folks around him, and that is witness tampering, that is obstructing justice. That is, that will get the attention of the Justice Department. You know, we've been talking about what potential charges could this lead to? Nothing from this committee, per se, but we know the Justice Department is following. But if you're intentionally, essentially witness tampering, we don't know what they're doing, we assume they do the same thing with, with, when the Department of Justice is interviewing, that is a shocking allegation, number one. Number two, that is a crime. And so that is yet another bucket of potential ways the Justice Department could charge the former President. So, look, I think she not only gave a lot of material for all of us to chew on, a lot of material for the January 6 investigators, but the Justice Department just got a whole new set of investigations that they, if they haven't been looking into, they may need to start.
Chuck Todd, thank you. That concludes our coverage. We'll have much more tonight on NBC Nightly News. For all of us at NBC News, I'm Lester Holt in Washington. Thank you for watching.
I'm Aaron Gilchrist at NBC News Headquarters in New York, and we begin with the breaking news you've just been following, the last-minute hearing from the January 6 Committee. Cassidy Hutchinson, a top aide to former White House Chief of Staff Mark Meadows, testifying this afternoon. Hutchinson telling the committee that former President Donald Trump knew people in the crowd at his rally on the Ellipse were armed, and that top advisors were worried about violence leading up to the 6th. During a taped interview presented last week, Hutchinson discussed Republican members of Congress who asked for pardons after the riot. Let's turn this hour to Julie Serken on Capitol Hill. She's been tracking this hearing with us as well. Julie Hutchinson telling the committee there that former President Trump wanted to march to the Capitol after his rally on the Ellipse. Talk to us about more of what we heard about, or the allegations we heard at least about Trump's actions that day.
Yeah, look, the committee using Vice Chair Cheney, a conservative, a Republican, a woman, to do the questioning here, and I think that's an important point for 25-year-old Cassidy Hutchinson, who is a top aide to Mark Meadows in the Trump administration, and the committee painstakingly painting a picture and laying out just how close in proximity Hutchinson was to where everything happened, the room where it happened, where her office was, in the White House, in the West Wing, really leading us through hour by hour of what occurred on January 5 and January 6, including that morning rally that President Trump held. She said that the President was viewing the screens behind the stage in the tent where they were standing. They showed some of those images. He was disappointed, I think that's a soft word there, he was very frustrated by the crowd size, because some of his supporters were armed, he was aware of that, and that's why the Secret Service wasn't letting them through the mags. He said, "They're not there to hurt me. Let them through anyway." And of course, in that speech is when he directed them to go to the Capitol, which, by the way, of course, he wanted to go with them as well. But when Secret Service said that he could not for security reasons, take a listen to what he said next.
Tony described him as being irate. The President said something to the effect of, "I'm the effing President, take me up to the Capitol now." To which Bobby responded, "Sir, we have to go back to the West Wing." The President reached up towards the front of the vehicle to grab at the steering wheel. Mr. Engel grabbed his arm, said, "Sir, you need to take your hand off the steering wheel. We're going back to the West Wing, we're not going to the Capitol." Mr. Trump then used his free hand to lunge towards Bobby Engel, and when Mr. Renato had recounted this story to me, he had motioned towards his clavicles.
Hutchinson also described other moments in which she saw President Trump acting, quote, "irate." In her words, she said that he would often throw dishes at the wall of the White House, flip an entire tablecloth off a dining table when he was frustrated.
I, you know, I think that was probably one of the more shocking parts of the testimony we heard today about a President of the United States getting into a physical altercation with one of the people charged with protecting him in the course of them doing their job. Julie, I do want to ask you too, there was a part of the testimony about a conversation between Mark Meadows, the Chief of Staff, and White House lawyer Pat Cipollone on the 6th. Talk to us a little bit about that, that exchange.
Yeah, they were urging, they being Cipollone and the counsel, urging the President to put out a statement to tell his supporters to leave the Capitol and go home when the situation was clearly growing very violent here in the Capitol. I want you to take a listen to a portion of that testimony, we could talk about it on the other side.
And I remember Pat saying to him something to the effect of, "The rioters have gotten to the Capitol, Mark, we need to go down and see the President now." And Mark looked up at him and said, "He doesn't want to do anything, Pat." And Pat said something to the effect of, and very clearly had said this to Mark, something to the effect of, "Mark, something needs to be done, or people are going to die and the blood's going to be on your effing hands. This is getting out of control."
Aaron, there are officers in the room watching this hearing at home and in this building who were there on the 6th protecting this Capitol, and I spoke with one of them who sustained grave injuries following the attacks he endured on January 6, and he told me one word, he feels betrayed. And you can imagine, this same individual served overseas, served in wars, and the Commander in Chief supposed to protect them apparently led this mob right to their front doorstep.
Julie Serken for us at the Capitol today. Julie, thank you, we appreciate your reporting on this. We do want to turn to some of our other headlines today. The number of migrants found dead in a tractor trailer in Texas has risen to 50. A worker in San Antonio made that disclosure.